Notice of the time, place, date, and subject matter of the meeting was posted at the entrance doors of the Education Service Center and at the West Bend Community Memorial Library. A copy was also sent to the Daily News, WIBD, Milwaukee Journal Sentinel, and other media sources that have requested notice of our meetings. At this time, I'd like to ask Superintendent Wimmer to confirm that this meeting was properly posted.
Yes, it was.
Great, thank you. Please join me in rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. We recognize the quorum of our board with all seven members present and wish to extend a welcome to our three new board members. Look forward certainly to serving with you. And as we go through, if you have any questions, of course, just let me know, or Superintendent Wimmer know as we go through. Some of these things were, they were all new to me when I joined, so we're all, we're all here to help with regard to the procedure, so welcome. All right, so next on our agenda is consideration of the approval of the agenda, which was circulated in advance. I would move to approve this agenda. Is there a second? Thank you, John. Motion and second to approve the agenda. Any final discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Great, that motion carries. We're going to move on then to recognition of retirees. And it's, it's our pleasure to make several recognitions tonight. The Board would like to take some time to recognize individuals who are retiring from the district after many years of service to our students, our staff, and our community. Supervisors, administrators, and colleagues have shared many words of recognition for these individuals, and we'd like to read some of the comments that were shared with the Board regarding each of these outstanding members of the West Bend School District team. And so each of our members here are going to share some of the remarks. And Kurt, I think we're going to start with you.
Yeah. First, would Lori Wanta from the German language team please come forward to be recognized? You're the first, thank you. So, a couple words. Lori has served the West Bend School District for 30 years. She has been the bedrock of our World Language Program and a staple in the district for many years. She has touched the lives of so many students through her German classes and her trips to Germany. Her dedication to the World Language Program is second to none, and her impact on the students and families in West Bend will be felt for many years. Lori has always had an outstanding, strength-minded attitude about student learning, making her a natural leader not just among German and World Language teachers, but the entire teaching staff. She is widely recognized in the district as a true expert in her field, who has, who is a devoted lifelong learner. For many years, she has traveled across all of our fifth through 12th grade schools, delivering her phenomenal lessons and engagement with students. This has allowed an enormous number of students and staff to benefit from her expertise. Lori is a kind person and revered colleague among the staff regardless of what building she is serving. She will be missed at Silverbrook, Badger, the high schools, and the entire West Bend School District. Lori, the Board wishes you, wishes to congratulate you on your retirement, and thank you for your years of dedicated service.
If you'd like, if you'd like.
You can say something.
If you'd like.
Yes.
Sure.
Well, I'm just, I have a lot of gratitude to the West Bend School District, and if I've had any success at all in teaching, it's because of Christ in me. And I am a Christ follower unabashedly, and it's because teaching requires sustained humility, patience, and taking the, taking the other perspective, compassion, empathy, which is impossible to do, really. And so, I have been blessed to also serve under many people who follow Jesus and go to Him every day before we teach. So, I just wanted to make sure that was clear, that I want to just not take that credit, but to give glory to the One who has sustained me this whole time. So, thank you.
All right, I think Melanie, you're going to introduce our next retiree.
All right, next would Helen Olig please come forward to be recognized? All right, Mrs. Olig has been with the district since 1997. Her commitment as a dedicated leader in food service at Jackson Elementary has brought consistency in the daily lunch operations and created a welcoming cafeteria environment for each student going through the lunch line. She collaborates with her colleagues, creating themed environments within the lunch area, using fun lighting and decorations to bring out smiles and excitement from the students, giving them a little extra joy in their day. Helen works hard, each day planning, prepping, serving, and wrapping up operations to do it again the next day in a positive manner. Her colleagues are sad to see her go, but wish her the best in her next venture, spending more time in nature at her family cabin, surrounded by grandkids and family who she will continue to bring smiles and laughter to each day. Helen, the school board wishes to congratulate you on your retirement and to thank you for your years of dedicated service.
I just want to say thank you for the opportunity of doing this for the last 25 years. So, I'll enjoy, that's for sure.
John, I think you're going to introduce our, our next retiree.
I am. Would Scott Mindle please come forward to be recognized? As a leader in our social studies department at West Bend East High School for over 20 years, Scott has always made great connections with the staff and students at the West Bend High School. He builds great rapport with the staff, include, including district leaders, principals, teachers, and support staff. It is clear that the relationships he develops with both staff and students are built on trust, understanding, and mutual respect. One of Scott's key strengths is his ability to engage, gain understanding, and relate with people. Scott is a very hard worker who does whatever is necessary to support this community. His colleagues and our students, sorry, that was part of the other part. He is a valuable contributor in the field of education and one who will be extremely missed moving forward. On top of his many accomplishments in the classroom, Scott is also known as an outstanding advocate for military veterans and is a leader who organize events and celebrations for veterans throughout the entire West Bend community. His commitment to honoring our past and current heroes in the armed forces has shined year after year in our district and helped inspire a sense of civic pride in, in countless students and staff members over the years. Scott, the school board wishes to congratulate you on your retirement and thank you for your years of dedicated service.
I guess I feel obligated that I have to say something. I guess what I can say is it's been an honor and a privilege to serve my entire full-time teaching career in the West Bend School District. Thirty-plus years, 30 years teaching, 31 years coaching, the thousands of students that I've been able to interact with, and just as importantly, the numerous colleagues that I've had the, the opportunity to teach alongside. They certainly have made me a better teacher, not to mention the literally thousands of our district military veterans that have passed through our high school from 1897 to 2023. So, thank you for the opportunity, thank you for the recognition, and I too am looking forward to a retirement. So, thank you.
All right. June, I believe you're going to be introducing our next retiree.
Yes. Next, would Lori Leonards from Jackson Elementary School please come forward to be recognized? Ms. Lori Leonards has been, been with the district since 1997. Her commitment to Jackson Elementary has primarily been as a fourth grade teacher and the second grade teacher over the years. Lori has been a key factor in keeping the culture at Jackson strong because she leads by example, showing the staff what it is to be a compassionate, dedicated, and committed teacher that has the ability to connect with each child individually by bringing out their potential and finding joy in their unique personalities. Lori is a courageous teacher who loves a challenge and inspires those around her to take on new adventures. She is someone that people absolutely love to be around because her mere presence makes people better at what they do and how they do it. The stories Lori shares are filled with humor and laughter and will continue to echo the halls, bringing smiles to all. Lori's team wishes her the best as she continues life's journey, giving her more time to enjoy those long bike rides, crocheting, grandchild snuggles, and time for you. Lori, the school board wishes to congratulate you on your retirement and to thank you for your dedicated years of service.
I truly made it one of my goals to lead by example. I don't like to be up in front of big people. I can end a little people, but big people, yeah. Anyway, I hope I brought the best out of my colleagues and my kids, and, and they certainly made me who I am. I couldn't be me without them being them. So, kudos to them, and, you know, you gotta love what you do, or it's, it's hard. So, thank you so much for the opportunity.
All right, and I think Kelly, you're going to introduce our next retiree. Is she, is she available tonight?
Is Pam Adams here?
We'll save a recognition then for the next meeting, correct? Yeah, all right. So, Chad, I think you've got some wind-up comments for us.
Sure. So, thank you to everybody for all those years of service that you've put in. Nothing but positive things to be said about during your recognition. And today's recognition is not the end of celebrating these impressive careers. The district will also be recognizing these employees and others at the annual recognition program in May. So, to all our retirees on behalf of the school board, please accept our congratulations and heartfelt thanks to each of you for everything you've done for the students, staff, and families of this community. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much for retirees for, for coming, allowing us to recognize you, for all the guests that you, that you brought with. We're going to continue on with our public meeting, and you are absolutely free to stay. As this is a public meeting, we love having participants. At the same time, if this is the spot where you'd plan to exit, it's totally fine, and you will not offend us. So, just pause for a second as we shift gears then to the next, to the next agenda item. So, thank you again for coming. All right. We'll move on then to public participation. So, I'm going to pause for a moment to see if there are any additional participant comment cards before I move forward. So, okay, looks like there's one more coming in. So, I, oh, thank you. Thank you very much. All right. So, with that, we have a total of 13 comment cards. So, what I'm going to do is I'm going to begin, well, actually, let me pause for a moment. So, we have 13 participant comment cards, and Board Policy 187 provides that each individual be given up to three minutes to speak. The Board Policy 187 also has a time limit of 30 minutes, but by simple majority vote, the Board can extend the time limit so that all individuals can speak. And so, I would, I would propose by making a motion that we extend the time limit to allow all 13 speakers to speak. Would there be a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Thank you, Melanie. A motion and second to extend time for 13 speakers for public participation. Any final comments? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All right. So, with that ground rule, I am going to, there we go, read Board Policy 187. "We've come to the public participation portion of our agenda. Board Policy 187 prescribes a nature and procedures for this segment. I summarize the policy at this time, but copies of the policy are available in the back of the room, and I urge you to familiarize yourself with the policy in its entirety. Residents of the district, parents of children in district schools, and employees of the district may participate. Participants desiring to address the Board should obtain and complete a participant comment card near the entry and turn it over to the President prior to the meeting or when allowed by the President. Participants may comment concerning an agenda item or a non-agenda item. Each participant will be called to the podium and will be given three minutes to speak. The participant must state his or her name in relation to the district. This information will appear in the minutes of the meeting. The Board will not engage in debate concerning the remarks or take immediate action. The Board may refer the matter to the superintendent, to a committee, or take the remarks into consideration in future action. Board Policy 872 provides a formal process for citizen complaints, and Board Policy 520 provides a formal process for employee complaints. The Board recommends use of these procedures as they guarantee a fair and timely response." So, I will invite participants forward to speak, and because there is a visible timer to help you manage your time, and there will be a chime when the time, when the time runs out. Also, given the number of participants, what I'm going to do is I'm going to say who's speaking and then who's on deck, so that the next speaker can be ready. And to help ensure that all participants are heard and that this meeting runs efficiently, please abstain from conversation, from comment, or applause during or after the public participation comments. I'm going to be sure to ensure a neutral environment for our, for our commentators. So, with that, I'm going to invite forward, our first participant, Jane Hegy, H-E-G-Y, and on deck is Mary Toddunter. Thank you. And I see from the participant comment card that you are resident of the district. Is that correct?
Correct.
Very good. The next three minutes are yours.
Thank you. Jane Hegy, "I am a resident in the school district who is concerned with the book The Fifty Seven Bus being used in the seventh and eighth grades for English class with children as young as 11 and 12 years old, as well as in the high school classes. I don't see it as age-appropriate. Not all content in all books and movies, which are rated, is suitable for minors. Minors are not allowed to view all movies at theaters. Our schools should be at least as safe as theaters for children. The book is inappropriate for minors because it is a book mainly about gender dysphoria, gender confusion, transgenderism, and psychological distress that results from an incongruence between one's gender assigned at birth and one's gender identity. Why are we teaching sexuality and gender issues outside of health class where curriculum is regulated by statute? Why isn't this information presented by a medical professional serving students who possibly, some of which, some of whom rather, might be struggling with gender dysphoria? Many medical professionals currently agree that the human brain has not fully developed until age 25. Here are some Amazon reviews of this book, one of five stars. Book review, "Totally deceiving. The entire book is about sexual orientation. Children need not read the book." Four to five stars. "It should not be a required read for middle school kids. It confused my daughters, and at this time of their lives, they have enough to worry about. Gender identity shouldn't be one of them." And four or five stars, "I would highly recommend to 13- to 15-year-olds to get them in line with today's political and social matters. Our administrators told West Bend School District students to turn in their textbooks in early May of 2020. We miss you. Have a nice summer. No textbook assignments. This time of instruction without textbooks has not been made up for students or the community. Please tell me if I'm wrong. There are millions of books in print. We can't put them all on the shelf or even include them as required reading. Please remove this one from our schools."
Thank you for your comments. We move then to Mary Toddunter, to the podium, please, and then on deck is Mr. Bill Schultz. And it, it does not indicate on the comment card if you're a resident or a parent. Could you let me know?
Yes, I am a resident of West Bend.
Excellent, thank you. The next three minutes are yours.
Okay. "I am a retired teacher who believes that the English classes in our school district for middle school and high school could offer better age-appropriate books than The Fifty Five Bus that we are currently using. This book is mainly propaganda focused on the LGBTQ agenda and gender dysphoria, which is also still considered a mental disorder by every medical institution, including Walter Reed. In addition, current medical science agrees that the human brain is not fully developed until age 25. So, why would we subject our students with developing brains to confuse them about sex and gender, especially when English class is not health class meant for teaching appropriate sex education?" Now, here are some clips from the book on page 24. It says, "Sometimes she wishes she could rip the skin from her back. Every moment of every day, she feels trapped in the flesh of a stranger. Before puberty, her physical body didn't seem to have that much to do with what or who she was. People used to mistake her for a boy, but she always felt proud to be a girl. But now, being a girl was like being stuffed into a heavy, constricting costume. She could hardly breathe in it. The rules of the universe were fixed. You look a certain way, and so you have to act a certain way, and people are going to treat you in a certain way. There is no way to alter. 'I think I might be transgender,' she whispered to her therapist the next week." On page 32, it says Debbie's mind kept going to the sex part. "Who did Sasha want to sleep with? After Sasha announced they were queer gender, she asked for clarification. Who are you attracted to? Do you have sexual feelings for men?" But that wasn't the issue for Sasha. They weren't all that interested in having sex with anyone, actually. And anyway, terms like homosexual and heterosexual made no sense if you didn't identify as one gender or another. Most of us see gender and sexuality and romance as one big internet continent, interconnected tangle of feelings. That is who I am. This is, this is developed language for combing the tangle into individual strands. In these online conversations, the word sex refers purely to biology, the chromosomes, organs, and anatomy that define male and female from the outside. Gender was a word for what people felt about themselves, how they felt inside. Sexuality was the category for who you were physically attracted to."
Thank you for your comments. I appreciate it. Thank you. Next, we invite Mr. Bill Schultz to the podium, and Stephen Roberts is on deck. And Mr. Schultz says you are a resident, parent, and you have students enrolled in the district. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Great. The next three minutes are yours.
Thanks for the opportunity to speak here. I'm going to give a little forewarning to anybody that may be easily offended. Please close your ears, brace for impact. These following excerpts are from a book straight out of, or straight, that's within our public education system here at the West Bend School District. Page 46, "Hey, I like your legs. A truck slowed down to roll behind him, heartbeat louder now, his chest a megaphone, a side-eye peep. Three young guys in a pickup, one leaned out the window. Let me suck your prick." Page 73, "I don't give a fuck about them flowers, the guy said. Why do you gotta be like that? Just respect your flowers." Now, it was a challenge. "Fuck them flowers," the guy said. "I'm gonna come back and shoot this shit up." Page 112, "Whoa, nigga. You said hey," Jamal echoed, screaming and shit. "Aw, nigga, you just broke my neck," Lloyd yelled. "Damn, pussy, bitch, fuck." Sasha leaps, Sasha leaps up, slapping the flaming skirt. "Oh, fuck, oh, fuck." The skirt looks unearthly, impossible, a ball of white fire. "Ow, ow," Sasha screams, voice high and terrified. Sasha runs for the door and finds it closed. They turn, dance in place, screaming, "Oh, my God. Who would, who would want to do some shit like that? That's fucked up. That's hella fucked up. Real stupid motherfuckers, man," he bellows. The kind of kid who, when the girl at the desk next to him doesn't want to show him her binder, slaps her hard on the behind. The smack caught TC entirely by surprise. Nobody had ever touched her butt before. Furious, she picked up a chair, ready to hurl it at Jeff. "Put it down," a classmate urged. "If you don't know anything about it, you need to shut the fuck up," TC shouted, her eyes filling, filling with tears. Page 239, "He's the one who smacked my ass," Jeff finished. "You're the one who smacked my ass? I'm the one that smacked your ass. I'd like to let you all know that that last, those last two minutes, as thick-skinned as I am, was pretty hard and uncomfortable for me to read in front of the people inside this room and the people that watching. So, I'd like to say that I'm sorry that I said those words. However, they were not my words. I did not write this book. I'm not the author of this book. This book is inside of our public education system. It's your job as a Board to fix this and do what's right. Thanks for the time.
Thank you. We invite Stephen Roberts to the podium, and Sue Kellum is on deck. And Mr. Roberts says you are a resident of the district. Is that correct?
I am.
Great. The next three minutes are yours.
I'm going to be brief. Yeah, my name is Steve Roberts. I'm a resident and a parent of now adult children who did most of their education in our district. I will tell everyone that I need make no warning apology for my words. So very simply, obviously, I watch carefully because I know the value of all parts of our community to have a high-quality public education system. Very simply, I want to congratulate the newest board members on their election and being seated here tonight for the first time. You were elected because the overwhelming number of voters saw your skills, your experience, and your commitment to our students and our community as much preferred versus your opponents. The community spoke clearly, not only in the school board election, but also in the wider West Bend community, that we wanted moderate, reasonable, smart, and experienced, hard-working folks to represent us in all those areas and be involved in very difficult decision-making. So I trust that you will all continue to strongly support the excellent professional school administration and administrators, all of them, the professional educators, all the district employees. I trust you'll continue to support all the partnerships and resources that the district uses to provide and continue to improve the high-quality public education we expect. So I'll simply say again, congratulations, and I wish you well in future shared decision-making responsibilities. Thank you.
Thank you. We move to Sue Kellum and invite to the podium, and Carol Hager is on deck. And Ms. Kellum, it says you are a resident of the district. Is that correct?
Yes, I am.
Great. The next three minutes are yours.
Thank you. I'm a resident of the school district, and I'm trying to wrap my head around why we are using The Fifty-Seven Bus in our English class for middle school. Why are we teaching sex and gender in English class? I thought these issues were so controversial and fragile that the state made a statute to help regulate the issues, including requiring each student district, each school district, to have a public ad hoc human growth and development committee that reviews what's being taught and how. In addition, our school's district policy has been to have a medical professional convey this material to the students. Here's a sampling of disturbing excerpts from the book. Page 37, "Discovering the existence of gender queer identity felt like discovering a secret room. All this time, there had been just two rooms, male and female. Now it turned out there was another room, one that you could be furnished however you wanted. The more, sorry, the more time Sasha spent in this room, the more comfortable it felt." Page 51, "Carl's classroom included a boy who sometimes liked to dress as a princess and a girl who talked about maybe being a boy someday. Turned out Sasha was right," Carl said. "Kindergarteners don't want to be pigeonholed." Page 55, "Nemo identifies as gender fluid. To me, gender fluid means I have the potential to be anything, any gender at any time," Nemo explained. "I can be male, female, masculine, feminine, neither, both." Like Sasha, Nemo uses they/them pronouns. Page 290, "If being a man meant always having to act confident and ever being able to admit feeling sadness or self-doubt, it was just as much of a trap as being a woman was. He was happier now than he'd ever been years before," he transitioned. "But still, he yearned for something else, some place outside of gender. Actually," he said, "I'm starting to identify a little bit as, I don't even know the word I want to use yet, I like androgynous, I like gender queer, because I fall neatly within the binary. I feel comfortable right now," he explained. "But if I were to radically shift my appearance in a way that was more androgynous, I don't know how comfortable that would be for me. I mean, I've already asked, been asked enough questions about my genitals. I'm just done with that. Is this really the best we can do as a school district? Would it really be difficult to find a book to swap The Fifty-Seven Bus that won't violate School Board Policy 381 on controversial issues? I think we can do better."
Thank you. Next is Carol Hager, invite to the podium, and on deck is Claudia. I'm going to say bus, B-U-S-S-E, Bussy. Thank you for correcting that. So Ms. Hager, it says that you are a resident of the district. Is that correct?
Yes.
Great. The next three minutes are yours.
Yes, I'm Carol Hager. I'm a resident, and I am a parent of an adult son that went through West Bend School District. In an effort to get the school board and administration to remove this book, The Fifty-Seven Bus, from the Badger reading list, I want to share some thoughts about The Fifty-Seven Bus and why I find it objectionable for seventh and eighth graders. In my speech two weeks ago, I read about the main character in The Fifty-Seven Bus, a gender non-conforming student called Luke, and then Sasha. On page 30, I quote, "Sasha explained that there were other choices besides he and she. Choices like it or they are more recently invented gender-neutral pronouns like ni, vi, or zi, or she. In addition, on page 36, I quote, 'In the end, these were the terms Sasha felt described them best: agender, gray-cupiosexual, quaromantic.'" And I'm sorry if I mispronounced any of these words, but they're not listed in the dictionary. In fact, that's a major point. Since most of these gender terms were unfamiliar to me, I recently checked the online Merriam-Webster Dictionary. These following are gender terms on The Fifty-Seven Bus that could not be found in the dictionary. The original gender-neutral pronouns, ni, vi, zi, zhi, although I did find that ni, N-E, is actually the abbreviation on Nebraska, and I hope our students know that. Other words in The Fifty-Seven Bus that are not defined in the dictionary, gray-cupiosexual, cupiosexual, gray-sexual, cupioromantic, heteroromantic, panromantic, biromantic, quaromantic, or quaromantic, who knows. Why? Why are these so important, and they're repeated over and over again in this book? Why are they important when this district's academic proficiency scores are very average? To me, this is normalizing the LGBTQ agenda to young children, using invented words to influence students to start using these terms in everyday life, and to accept that people can choose their gender. What could be more bizarre than students learning unofficial terms about gender and sexuality from an English teacher and an English language arts book? I look forward to The Fifty-Seven Bus being removed from reading lists in the West Bend School District. By the way, this is not book banning. This is a right that parents have to oversee the curriculum that has been decided by bureaucrats and administrators at the state and local levels. And I thought that sex education was supposed to be taught in health class. Parents also have the right to remove their children from public schools and homeschool, and under the Wisconsin Parental Choice voucher program, they can transfer their tax money to private schools, and this may be what will be happening if this book is not removed.
Thank you for your comments. All right. Claudia Bussy, do I have that right this time?
Yes, I'm Claudia Bussy.
Great. Thank you. I would just mention who's on deck. I'm sorry. Jody Geenan will be next, and Ms. Bussy, it says you're a resident of the district. Is that correct?
Yes, taxpayer and resident here of the West Bend School District.
Great. The next three minutes are yours. Thank you.
And I'm kind of new to the stage here, but rather disappointed to learn that we have this book titled The Fifty-Seven Bus as part of the curriculum for middle school and high school students. This year, I'm going to celebrate my 50th class reunion later, and 50 years ago, I had English all through high school, and the last two years of high school, I had a recent college graduate teaching English junior and senior years in high school. Come to find out years later, he declared he was gay and married his partner, but never once did he introduce his sexual questions or gender dysphoria to the classroom. And just to read a few more stanzas from the book, on pages 28, "How do you know what gender you are?" Andrew, Sasha said, "I don't know if this is rude or not, but I was wondering how you realized you were a guy." "I just knew I wasn't a girl," Andrew had explained. "I just knew that I was not that at all." Now, as Sasha explained that they were also questioning their gender, Andrew felt a rush of relief, similar to the one he'd felt when he came out to Sasha. And that seemed to be true for most people. They just knew whether or not the appearance of their body matched the gender in their mind. That was some core understanding about identity. But Sasha didn't feel that. She didn't feel strongly. This is what I am, and she didn't feel strongly this is what I'm not. Other people seemed to have a file in their brain that was marked gender. Sasha ransacked their own brain, looking for the file, but it didn't seem to be there. And so really, what does that mean? The idea of not having a gender wasn't frightening to Sasha, but it wasn't a relief either. Maybe this is just a phase, Sasha thought. Maybe I'm just overthinking things. For me, at least, gender queer includes an aspect of questioning. Sasha explains the fact that I'm questioning my gender meant that I was gender queer. Still, Sasha kept probing, and on Facebook, she actually posted for an update as to status, what did gender queer mean. And to further go on, she shares this subject with her parents, and her mother says to you, "Are you gender queer?" "Yeah," Sasha said. It happened to be the extent of their conversation. And basically, Sasha said, "I don't understand if I'm masculine or feminine." And her parents later, too, said they weren't quite sure, but they scratched their heads. Apparently, something big had happened with their conversation, but they weren't exactly sure. And what I'm sure about is this book needs more critique, more evaluation. The best thing right now is to turn off The Fifty-Seven Bus. Thank you.
Thank you. Invite Jody Geenan to the podium, and Ms. Nancy Justman is on deck. And Ms. Geenan, I believe, there's nothing circled on your card, but I believe you're a resident of the district. Is that correct?
Yes, I am.
All right. I will circle that for you. Not a problem. And the next three minutes are yours.
Thank you. As taxpayers and parents, we are waiting to hear why a book like The Fifty-Seven Bus was chosen for Badger Middle School students. Before spring break, the superintendent mentioned this issue in a Samor message. She said this book was not assigned to students. Their parents were given a list of books, and they had the opportunity to choose whether the book was appropriate for their own son or daughter. This sounds like the district believes parents were at fault for trusting and not investigating the list of books, even though the school district chose this book and offered it as a book club selection. Contrary to the superintendent's statement, there are parents saying The Fifty-Seven Bus was an assigned project. If the book was part of a book club, we should be able to see the permission slip given to families. Was there a synopsis or review provided for each book on the permission slip or reading list? How many copies of The Fifty-Seven Bus are owned by the district? How much did that cost the taxpayers? And I challenge the school board to find out what employee or committee chose this book for middle schoolers, especially since The Fifty-Seven Bus was already being used by high school juniors in English III. As we're demonstrating tonight, the content of this book is extremely graphic and very profane. Look at the amount and variety of the vile words used by the characters, such as ass eight times, the F-word 12 times, the N-word five times, shit eight times, and other assorted words such as prick, pussy, and mother F. The book has no literary value, and I believe it was chosen for socially-emotional learning purposes. As you might remember, parents and residents were concerned about the infiltration of SEL, and despite many speeches at school board meetings and letters to the editor, the school board approved SEL. This book fits in perfectly with the aim of SEL, to promote teachers as counselors as they lead discussions of a psychological nature. Children then turn to their teachers for support, and the influence of family values is diminished. This is not a challenge asking for library books to be removed. This is not book banning. This involves curriculum and the ability of parents and taxpayers to determine what material is appropriate for certain age levels. The current process for choosing English books for classroom use is obviously flawed. There's no public oversight, when something like The Fifty-Seven Bus is deemed acceptable for seventh and eighth graders, not to mention high school students. Parents have a fundamental right to direct their children's upbringing, including education and values. These rights do not stop at the classroom door. We feel the door has been slammed in our faces, as our community's children are being force-fed liberal ideology without parental knowledge or approval. I look forward to seeing a report on how this book ended up in the hands of West Bend students. Thank you.
Thank you. We move to Ms. Nancy Justman, invite her to the podium, and Ms. Tanya Lor is on deck. And Ms. Justman, you've indicated you are a resident of the district and a parent or guardian of at least one child in the district.
I am, and I'm back.
The next three minutes are yours.
Let me be clear. I am not speaking about the book tonight. So today, I'm here representing myself. I didn't meet with anyone or any group to prepare my remarks. After serving the students and staff and the community for the past six years, I feel it is important to address the current board. Many people run for public office, and for many different reasons. Some don't like the way that things are being run. Some feel it's their civic duty. Others feel that their opinions and insights are more important than others and the only ones that matter. It is the job of the West Bend School District Board to represent all 6,000 students. Regardless of your feelings or beliefs, it is your duty to ensure that all students receive the best education possible. Board members must realize that every student is different, and you must make the best decisions for all students, not just a few. Rarely do extreme opinions or actions work for the greater good. It is your job to look beyond your own circumstances and ask yourself if the decision that you are making is in the best interest of the students, or is it in the best interest of your friends or people you have met with before a meeting. Acknowledging that not all students and families are the same is crucial. Allowing parents and families to opt out of things that they do not feel is right for them is a great way to compromise on tough issues. Taking away choices and assuming some individuals speak for an entire community is not the way to move the district forward. Without a strong school district, everyone suffers. Property values decrease, new growth slows, and home sales will cease. A thriving district is critical for everyone. You have many important decisions ahead of you regarding facilities, staffing, and the budget. The district budget is not like your home budget or a business budget. Your home or your business budget can be adjusted by increasing your income and by cutting some expenses. In the school district, you can't increase your income through price increases such as a business can. You are not selling a commodity. You are not making widgets. You are building the future. You can't put a monetary value on that because it is priceless. Some people believe that cuts can easily be made in the district. When you cut, someone loses. You might not be involved personally in the arts, sports, clubs, special education, the gifted and talented program, or even a technical program, and therefore, you think those are the areas to cut. But I can assure you that other families and students would be profoundly affected if cuts were made in those areas. So be careful. Staffing shortages will continue to plague the district for the foreseeable future. Colleges are graduating less teachers. Current teachers are leaving the field. How will you combat that? When making decisions and coming up with creative ways to gain and retain teachers, always remember to put yourself in their shoes. Would you work for that amount of money? Would those benefits work for your family? Remember, you only supervise the superintendent. I wish you all the best. I encourage you to keep up the fight and make the district more better.
Thank you. We move to Tanya Lor. Welcome to the podium, and on deck is Jason Pennerman. And Ms. Lor, it says you are a parent or guardian of a student in the district and employee. Is that correct?
That is correct.
The next three minutes are yours.
Thank you. My name is Tanya Lor, and I am a teacher and parent in the West Bend School District. I'm speaking tonight as the president of the West Bend Education Association. Our district, like districts across the state, are facing two major problems: lagging funds and a shortage of teachers. These two issues do not exist in isolation. Decreased funding has led our district to balance its budget on the backs of teachers year after year, which in turn has led to teacher vacancies that become increasingly difficult to fill as the compensation offered becomes less and less competitive with other employment opportunities. This year was no different, as teachers were once again offered salaries and benefits that lost value to the cost of living. We can't continue down the path if we want to fill vacancies with qualified educators. And yet, the district has decided that now is the time to make even bigger cuts to teacher compensation in the form of reduced benefits. The HR department has been trying to sell their plan to teachers as wanting to concentrate more money into salaries rather than benefits. This false dichotomy is a clever attempt to rob Peter to pay Paul. Let's be clear. Taking money out of benefits and putting it into salary isn't an increase in pay. It's a reallocation of pay, and it doesn't get the district any closer to catching up with the losses and take-home pay our teachers have experienced throughout the last 10 years. In their presentation, members of the HR department keep talking about their goal at being at the median of area districts in terms of compensation. First, being the median for teacher compensation means 50% of neighboring districts are offering more attractive compensation than we are, which is not great when the pool of qualified teachers is drying up. Can we truly continue to attract and retain above-average teachers by offering at or below-average compensation? Can we truly continue to attract and retain above-average teachers by offering at or below-average compensation? And where does aiming at the median for teacher compensation put us in terms of competing with comparable professions which teachers have been leaving here to pursue? Our suggestion moving forward is if you want to know how to attract and retain teachers, ask teachers, the people who work directly with our community's children each and every day. Thank you.
Thank you. We invite Jason Pennerman to the podium. And on deck is Renee, sorry if I mispronounce your name, Vertin. It looks like V-E-R-T-I-N. Mr. Pennerman, it says here you are a resident, a parent, and you have students enrolled in the district and an employee. You circled everyone.
Thank you.
All right, that's correct. If it is, the next three minutes are yours.
Good evening. My name is Jason Pennerman, and I'm a teacher here, a union officer, and a parent of a student. First, the West Bend Curriculum and Instruction Department should be reduced to pre-Act 10 staffing levels, and the work that those staff did should be performed by department leaders. Before Act 10, West Bend School District's Curriculum and Instruction Department was much smaller. There was an administrator and office assistants. Before Act 10, teachers with the additional title of department leader assisted administrative directed, assisted administrative-directed systemic changes to curriculum, and they were compensated, but not as much as a full-time employee. Replacing positions with little to no child interaction with department leaders, number one, will reduce non-teaching district staff, thus saving money, encourage teacher satisfaction and retention, and three, increase transparency, efficiency, and trust. Second, the 90/10 grading formula should be changed. To deal with the test score concerns and student classwork completion, West Bend should change the 90/10 summative formative grading policy, especially at the middle school level. Number one, reason one, 90/10 was applied unilaterally by prior administration with little teacher input and no student input. Two, I know of no other school district that places so much weight on assessments versus classworks. Number three, classwork and homework develop skills. A student can pass a class completing no classwork if they can pass the test. I have students like that. Number four, my students who do the least classwork and homework tend to earn the lowest test scores. By giving only 10% for this necessary work, we are telling students it's not important. Number five, there's little to no research supporting a 90/10 system. However, there's been ample student and teacher feedback in our district indicating this is a failed system that should end. Solutions: do the research and survey teacher feedback for formative summative percentages that will improve student learning. Secondly, teachers and students could be surveyed on formative and summative numbers. Using student input would encourage student buy-in, especially by students who do not understand the connection between classwork and summative assessments, or they don't care. In conclusion, please increase buy-in and increase student performance. Replace the 90/10 grading system. We've had dropping enrollment in our district. We should be decreasing our curriculum staff, not increasing it. If we have fewer students and fewer teachers, shouldn't we have fewer people overseeing students and teachers? Please bring back department leaders.
Thank you. We move to Renee Vertin, and I'm sorry, did I pronounce your name correctly? I'm sure I did not.
You pronounced it correctly.
I pronounced it correctly. And on deck is Hannah Gale. And it says here you're a resident of the district. Is that correct?
I am.
Great. The next three minutes are yours.
Thank you. I also live in the school district, and I find it appalling that our middle schools and our high schools are using the book The 57 Bus for English classes. Perhaps it shouldn't be alarming that the administration would choose this book since the FOIA Act, Freedom of Information Ask/Request, revealed that LGBTQ themes of this book mimic the content of the training that district teachers have received over the past four or five years. In case there's any question that this book, with its emphasis on gender and sexuality, is not appropriate or is confusing to readers that are students, please listen to an excerpt from page 33 of the book. So I'm going to be going through several sections here. The first section is the introductory. Gender, sex, sexuality, romance, some terms. Because language is evolving rapidly and because different people have different preferences, always adopt the language individuals use about themselves, even if it differs from what's here. So the next section is entitled Terms for Gender and Sex. Number one, agender or, let me take a look here. It's actually got three different pronunciations. It's called either neutroy or, I'm sorry, and, nu-toi, and neutros. I looked all these things up because I had no idea what this was. And so this is actually according to a Wiki source online for LGBTQIA. The next item is androgynous. It identifies as a third gender that blends male and female characteristics. And then there's gender, bi-gender, excuse me, bi-gender and gender fluid. Sometimes identifies as male and sometimes as female. There's cis and cisgender, and it is the opposite of transgender. There's gender questioning. It's unsure whether they belong to the gender spectrum. Then there's the next term, gender queer, which can also be called non-binary. Gender identity doesn't fit neatly into male and female categories. There's also intersex, born with sexual anomaly, excuse me, autonomy, organs or chromosomes that don't seem to fit the typical definitions of male or female, replaces the outdated and offensive term hermaphrodite. And then eight, because I'm kind of gunning through, this is only eight of 22, trans and transgender. There's also terms for sexuality, asexual, bisexual, copiosexual, graysexual, heterosexual, homosexual, and pansexual, terms for romantic inclination, and then Sasha's terms. I have to tell you, I dragged out an anatomy and physiology book that I had from 2013 and looked up all these. And in the reproductive section, and I haven't been able to compare it to the newest edition, but none of these terms were in there. And so I'm asking you, please take this book off because it's just not good for the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And I believe it's our, it is our last participant tonight for public participation is Hannah Gale.
Yes, that is me.
Great. Did I pronounce your name correctly?
You did. Thank you.
And it indicates you're a resident of the district. Is that correct?
I am.
Great. You have the next three minutes.
I am also very disturbed with our school district's choice of required reading books for the seventh to ninth grade English classes and the English III high school class, particularly the 57 bus. I'm further disturbed by the fact that when permission slips were used for reading books, none of the permission slips, including those for the ninth grade so-called book club or required reading, came with a warning of any kind. Nothing that would give red flags that there was anything that might be concerning to some families. Is it any wonder that so many families are losing trust in the teachers and the school district? Here are a couple more experts from the 57 bus, page 38. Ian, who has two moms, so he was pretty comfortable with LGBTQ stuff. He remembers his thought process going like this. Okay, not male. Okay, not female. So neither? Okay. At another school, a student who stepped outside the usual gender categories might have been the topic of gossip or debate, or at least a few raised eyebrows. But Maybach's small student's body already included one student who was agender and two who were transgender. Multiple people would come out, and you'd be like, okay, they're this and they're this name and this pronoun now, says Sasha's friend Carrie. I mean, like, not everyone was good at it, but the people who were friends with the trans people were, and more and more. The pronoun he felt wrong. I don't want for people to think of me as a he, and when they say he, not only does it reinforce in their brains that I am a he, it also reinforces it in the brains of the people who are listening, Sasha explains. It doesn't really directly affect me, at least to hear it. It's more like, huh, that's not right. And when people use the right pronouns, when they use they or another gender-neutral pronoun, it feels validating. Page 266. Sasha was the only non-binary person in the house. But in response to the request, the house changed the names of the gender bathrooms, known as heads, in a linguistic carryover from E.T.'s Navy days, to men's plus and women's plus. Anyone who doesn't exclusively identify as male can use the woman's head, and anyone who doesn't exclusively identify as female can use the men's head, Sasha explained. By this definition, Sasha could use both, and so it goes. It's almost as if this book is trying to convert students to accepting the LGBTQ. Agenda complete with terms and definitions. Who decided this was worthy required reading material? Why wasn't this book put through public review and even school board approval before it was ordered, much like the resources for sixth-grade social studies, the biology, the U.S. history, and most recently, the preschool reading programs? Please remove this book from the schools. Please send permission slips with warnings, ratings, and reviews for all required reading books, and please take appropriate steps to create a policy that requires public and school board reviews for all required reading programs. Thank you.
Thank you. Right, and that concludes our public participation portion. And first of all, thank you for sharing your comments and for moving through in an orderly and respectful fashion. Just as a reminder, the board is not to engage in debate concerning the remarks or take immediate action, but we may refer the matter to the superintendent or a committee or take this up in further action. Superintendent Wimmer, I think perhaps during your superintendent's report, may address a few of these items. So again, thank you so much for sharing your comments. We'll move on to the next item then on our agenda, which is our consent agenda. And on our consent agenda, we've got a number of items. So just as a reminder for our new board members, so this is kind of a packet, if you will, or a package of items that are rather routine, and so they're kind of taken up as a bundle. However, you have the ability to request that any item be removed from the consent agenda for discussion separately. We'll move forward with it as presented. The consent agenda contains minutes of the April 10, 2023 regular board meeting, and contains a number of contracts. And so thanks to the 2023-2024 school year renewal, we have 369 full-time contracts, 23 part-time, two job-share contracts, and I believe seven new contracts, if I have that correct. Let's see, we have six resignations to approve and one retirement. I think that takes care of it. Are there any questions concerning the consent agenda? Hearing none, I would move to approve the consent agenda. Would there be a second?
Second.
Thank you, Melanie. A motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The consent agenda is approved. All right, moving then on to reports. And our first report is for school reports, Green Tree, Jackson, and McLean. And I believe Dr. Jill Reese is going to kick off this segment. Dr. Reese, good evening to you.
Thank you. Good evening. So we have, as you said, three schools tonight. We will begin with Green Tree, and John Graff will be presenting. We will then have Jackson, and Darcy Van Ettestine will be presenting. And last, we have McLean, and Andy Kasek will be presenting. Thank you.
Thank you very much for having me up here tonight. I'm proud to talk about Green Tree Elementary School and the great things that we're doing. Welcome to the new board members. Congratulations on being elected. Thank you to our retirees. I've worked alongside many of them, and they're great people, so thank you very much for recognizing them tonight. Green Tree Elementary School is a great school. Mr. Donaldson visited, so I'm sure he can attest to that. We focus everything in our school improvement plan based off of our pyramid in the school district. Focus on student learning, engagement, and customer satisfaction, safe and secure, and then effective and efficient. I'll go through each of these buckets in a different way besides the effective and efficient bucket. So first is student learning. When we look at it, we set a goal each year. We looked at a 5% growth in literacy from the spring of 2022 to the spring of 2023. So when we look at our scores in fall and we take STAR, which is our norm reference assessment, we take that in the fall, winter, and spring. Our students that take the early literacy assessment, which is grades K1, were at about 34% at or above benchmark. When we finished with the winter assessment, we were at 53% above benchmark, so about 20% or 19% growth. STAR reading, grades two through four, we had an 11% jump, so we were at 30% initially and 41% now. And so some of the action steps that we take throughout the school year is push and intervention. Our interventionists are in the classroom, supporting our teachers consistently. This really helps because collaboration. Collaboration is so much easier when your interventionist is next to your classroom teacher in the same room giving instruction, but also you can hear vocabulary that's used. You can hear instructional strategies that are going on. We have professional learning communities at Green Tree that we meet on a weekly basis. Those professional learning communities have intentional conversations, whether it's about writing instruction, students in intervention, data cycles, co-teaching. We go through a myriad of topics. Each of these groups, and you'll see in math and literacy, we have time-bound, short-cycle goals that we consistently use and say, are we meeting those goals? What do we have to redo? What are our next steps? What are we doing for students that are above grade level? What about those on and those below? That's why those professional learning community conversations are so important. The next area is math, so that was the same as far as a 5% goal, so going from 45 to 50%. Math assessment, so grade one through four, we were at 28%. We had a 10% growth in the winter to 38%. We had Bridges Professional Development, so we've had Bridges, I believe, for six or seven years in the school district. And we had a couple people come in, go over the tools, the resources, because sometimes when you haven't had that in a while, it's nice to see what's been updated, what's improved, and what other things you can go to if you need to help a student. We have data tools that we use, so Dreambox, Happy Numbers. We do goal setting. We assign lessons based off of where students may have gaps. That's where that professional learning community time is so important, is where teachers, as I said before, they're looking at students that are at all levels and making sure that they make proper growth. And then once again, having those time-bound, short-cycle assessments and going, okay, are we making the growth that we want to? We look at our data consistently to say, are we where we want to be? And sometimes we're stalled. Sometimes we're not where we want to be. And who else do we need to involve to make sure that students are growing at Green Tree? So safe and secure, so in order to have high academics, you also have students that understand the expectations of your building. So when we looked at our goal is to increase the number of students with zero-to-one behavior documentations from 76% to 82%. Currently, we sit at 82.3%. The best thing about Green Tree Elementary School is that when you walk in, you will be greeted by a staff member. It starts with Mrs. Karazi in the main office, who runs the ship, especially with an interim principal. I might have been there a couple of years ago, but she's fantastic. When you get past that door, if you walk down one hallway, you have Mrs. Core starting in grade one, fantastic teacher that knows almost every student by name. We have that throughout, though, because it is a true learning community. Welcoming routines, I mean, that's that good morning, how's it going? Our staff members are constantly out in the hallway early in the morning to see how students are doing. They end their lessons also with an optimistic closure or the end of the day, just to, we want you to come back happy that you had a great day at Green Tree. Stepping back to Green Tree, it's been fantastic to see how our staff are and the way they interact with kids. Even kids that struggle, they wipe the slate clean every single night, and they come back and appreciate each and every child. What I talked about PLCs, we also talk about when we talk about a child's academic scores. We also go, okay, what are some things that we can do to support our students? So tomorrow, our Tier One and Tier Two teams, those are kind of our universal teams that look at behavior data, that look at how our students are performing, will meet and go, okay, what can we do for each child? Finally, engagement and customer satisfaction. So we kind of stepped, I stepped into a situation where we wanted to really get our building leadership team involved. It is truly a building full of leaders, which is so nice to be able to go there and say, okay, it's November. What can we do and keep going? Appreciate all the work that Ms. Potter did. Really set it up for a great year. But then we worked on a culture of positive recognition, making sure that the great things that our staff are doing are recognized consistently. So we had a 7% gain on our engagement scores. You know, how satisfied are you with your job? We had a 10% growth there. The intent to remain with the West Bend School District was up 9% to 91%. And then most importantly, one of the things we wanted to make sure is any transition, that our staff had supervisors that stepped in and supported them. And so my direct supervisor statements are aligned with his or her actions. We scored 100%. That also includes Nan Lustig that helps out at Green Tree as well. So those are just some of our highlights. And this is always the fun part, the kids. You come to Green Tree, you meet a great group of kids. You'll see kids reading all the time. They're in books. They're excited about books. We have some Noetic Math winners right there that you'll see in the picture. We had our Night of the Stars, so Blacklight Art Show that was going on was really cool for kids' experience. So the Night of the Stars, as you walked around the building, and student learning was displayed all over the school. We had a learning round today, so Dr. Reese came to Green Tree, and we went over things that are happening in our building and went in some classrooms. And one of the administrators that was visiting was so impressed with the amount of writing on our walls. Our students are truly telling their story, and they're really showing what they have grown throughout the school year. We also had a great concert put on by Mrs. Wysocki, who is also retiring but is a teacher's on-call employee, and she did a fantastic job. I've gotten so many emails about how great the concert was, so kudos to her. Most importantly, thank you very much for allowing me to step back and be the principal of a school. That's truly fantastic. I've loved my time at Green Tree, and I love I've loved my time at Green Tree and I love the staff and students. Uh, I had a member of our learning community at the end of the day say, hey, why did it take so long for me to see you? And I'm like, well, I still remember who you are and, um, it's been a great journey, so thank you very much.
Great, Mr. Graff, thank you. Let me pause for questions. Are there any questions, observations, thoughts?
I'll just say, uh, yeah, I did get to visit Green Tree. Um, the staff was one of the most engaged staff, you know, that I got to visit throughout my tours of the school so far. Um, I think there's lots of things that they're doing at Green Tree that I wanted to bring back to, you know, kind of be a benchmark to what, what's going on in the lower grades. And I think you guys are doing great, so, um, you guys' staff is definitely, um, coming up with new ideas for, for different learning, um, issues and, uh, struggles that we're seeing. So I think you guys are, you know, your staff is definitely doing, you know, good work there, so appreciate it.
Great, other thoughts? Appreciate your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you. I believe Darcy is next. Good evening to you.
All right, good evening, everyone. Darcy Van Ettenstein, Principal, Jackson Elementary. Welcome to our new board members. Thanks for being here. And I'm going to walk you through kind of our mid-year growth check at Jackson Elementary and giving you an update where students are at in owning the JJ Way and also showing our staff engagement has increased throughout the year and our awesome community connections as well. So let's go ahead and get started with literacy. We've had some great growth so far in literacy. The blue column is our winter growth score, so that's where we sit now. And then the column to the right of that is our end-of-year goal. So you can kind of see I color-coded if we've already either met that proficiency or if we're right on track, meeting our way there. And some great things that, when I presented this to the kindergarten team, um, a few months ago, when we first had this, they're like, I don't know, I don't know what we're doing. But when we really dug down, they're like, oh yeah, we are doing some things different. And some of their intentionality was, one, we have to thank our 4K, our 4K crew, because they have been doing an amazing job. I don't know if any of them are here tonight, but, um, preparing our students coming into kindergarten. I mean, our cohort is just higher in general academically, which is great. Some other key things, not only in kindergarten, but throughout our school, is students have their Reader's Notebook this year, so it feels like they have more of like a published, finalized piece when they're, when they're writing. So you can really sit, see that there's more of a sense of pride in what they do and motivation. And I think that's huge, especially within your early learning. And, um, and also just with our creative scheduling. I think this year, our whole theme has been like intentionality when it comes to student gaps and what's the root cause, what are we going to do, what's next? And even like with staff time, what are we going to do, what's intentional about it? So getting down to the root cause and coming up with a key strategy to focus on, and then once we reach that, doing another thing, so doing something really well and then moving on instead of trying to tackle everything all at once has really been the bang for the buck with our growth this year in our student learning. And even like in second grade, you can see that in the beginning, in the fall, they came in, they originally assessed a little bit lower, so they had us a little bit worried. But our team jumped on it and dug into the data and, um, infused into like their different mini lessons, both in literacy and in math, you'll see it on the next slide, just what did they need to do to increase that growth? And they've done a great job so far, and so now it's continuing to grow our young learners. So similar story with math and some of our great gains as well. We're on our track to meeting our end-of-the-year goal. And we continue to do our monthly professional learning communities. We have our literacy specialist and I go in and intentionally meet with our teachers. We have it all aligned. We try to keep what they're doing in the classroom and what their, their individual goals are and team goals connected. So it's a smooth system there. And then we also have our engagement and customer satisfaction focusing on staff engagement. And this is where we wanted to really increase where we're promoting Jackson as a place to be and satisfied with my job. And you can see there's some great gains there, way above our target for the year and our, and our staff is excited about that. But that was intentional as well. And some of the things we did there was staff recognition, there's just some little shots of what we did with traveling trophies, recognizing one another, staff shout-outs to each other each week. Um, our PTO has really helped out with supporting that as well. Um, staff sharing out strategies, what they do in the classroom every month at every single staff meeting, that's been huge as well, just giving their confidence. Staff like presenting in front of little people, it's hard for them to present in front of big people, but it gives them confidence and it gives that conversation going with their colleagues, not just in fourth grade, but now a kindergarten teacher is interested in what a fourth grade teacher just talked about. So making sure that we keep that intentional with staff engagement and sharing what they do and what they do best. And also intentional in staff's time, they, that was one of the biggest feedbacks. What is one big feedback, they said, time, give us time. So we're creative with how we shuffle their time, how we create time to get them to plan together, to dig into the data, to create results. So mapping that out for the whole year with any of our meetings makes for some predictability so that they can have that nice family-school balance, which we all strive for. So it's a little bit about engagement and then safe and secure with our students. We have, our goal is to make sure like our referrals, our minors and majors, where students are zero-to-one referrals, at least 86 or more percent already this school year, have zero or one referrals, and it's great to see that almost nearly 80% of our students have zero referrals, whether it's minor or major. So we're on a great path as well. And that's also intentional, intentional in that we're having students do student-to-student staff, or student-to-student shout-outs in the classroom. So each classroom is creating their own system and sharing that out with these, like pumping them up, giving them encouraging things, and that just goes a long way to show that there's a sense of community. That's also very intentional. They have a community time each morning and to set the intention for the day, and that really starts them off strong. And they, you know, they hold each other accountable as well. So I think that building a sense of community in the classroom and the school is really what's helping leverage our growth this year here at Jackson. And then some other community things, our community is tight, we're all about giving back, they're all about coming into the school, we're about going out into the community. We just had a career day, which was wonderful. I think we had 28 different people coming in to present, so students had choices to go, should go see something, whether it was radiology or maybe it was the SWAT team. Yes, they came. The police department made sure to put that on their Facebook, that school is safe, even though the SWAT team and like the fire department and the police department were there, it was safe. And our photography, just getting kids interested and showing them careers early on, um, has been awesome. We just had our school carnival last Friday and we had some of these members walking around in the schools and they're like, oh, I remember you, I want to be that radiologist or I want to do that. And they, I mean, kindergarten couldn't even say radiology, you know, two weeks ago. So it's just nice spurring that, getting that like, that fun and joy for what could be next for them, you know, besides the typical veterinarian or, or, um, doctor. It's really going in these different avenues and those are great careers too. Um, then we're all about safety and trust. We love having our police officers in our building. They come and visit at least three to four times a week. Sometimes they'll take over the librarian's role and pick up the book and read to the class, um, in the library, or they'll walk around trying to take someone's tater tot or, you know, things like that, building connections and relationships. But we also have lunch with the law with them. So it's, they have a big emphasis this year about trust and we're there to help. And so they want to instill that early on. So we're more than welcome to have them in our schools for that. We're all about a school of school spirit and belonging. We love our spirit days, we have multiple throughout the week, throughout the year. Um, also having fun, having fun there, either it's for a cause or just because. We have some great events that bring our community together and it's been awesome being able to come together and do these things, whether it's duct-taping staff to the wall for, to raise money, or a McTeacher Night where we raise some funds, or just for fun, we have a family jog and jam where we get to do a lot of different activities. But community is huge in Jackson, and I just want the board to understand that as we think of going forward, we think of referendums, the different ideas of how we do things, that is, if anything I could advocate for our Jackson community is that to have a school there, to keep it there. They love, they love it, they love their community, we love the community of sport that comes in. And, um, yeah, we like to have fun down there in Jackson too. So that is all I have for this presentation. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Questions, observations?
I just wanted to congratulate you on your staff engagement. I think that is, you know, as we talk about staff turnover and participate, like just seeing that participation and, um, basically happiness level, like, you guys are doing something really good, so that's awesome.
Thank you. Yes, that's intentional, you gotta take care of yourself before you can take care of others, so that goes in school too. Thank you.
Great, other thoughts, comments? We appreciate your update.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. And we welcome Andy Kasek to the podium. Good evening to you.
Hello, hello, everybody. How's everybody doing tonight? Well, excellent. Um, again, I'm here for McLean Elementary. Um, I'm here to, uh, be the spokesperson for all the hard work that goes on in that building each and every day. Uh, and so in your board presentation, you saw your packet, you saw charts. Uh, but I really want to hit home all the hard work that the teachers have done, um, midway through the year, almost to the end of the year now, okay? Um, and again, we're going to be talking about student learning, engagement satisfaction, safe and secure, effective and efficient, uh, and where we are meeting those goals. I think more importantly, how are we hitting those goals? Um, and the agility that staff shows each and every day. And so as you can see, we're making growth, kindergarten all the way through fourth grade. On the left-hand side, uh, I asked my staff to really dig into all of the work that they have been doing around literacy so far. Uh, and so those statements that you see about district-directed early reading empowerment coaching and instruction, that is our teaching and learning, um, department really digging into and offering professional development opportunities around literacy. Uh, several teachers in my building, several teachers, uh, in that cohort around the district. But I think it's really important to know, uh, that our teachers are not out there trying to figure it out on their own. Big support from our, our community here from district, uh, which then aligns to where our children are, uh, as they move forward. Implementation of a sound wall to enhance F and P. F and P, progress monitoring around phonics and a spelling program. Perseverance, student perseverance in their writing, utilizing our readers' response journals. Uh, John mentioned his building about how much writing you will see. Uh, same at McLean, and that has been one of our goals throughout, because if you become a better writer, you become a write, better reader and vice versa. Uh, so providing a common place to organize craft ideas in that response journal, and it gives the writers, the students, the opportunity to track their learning and their progress. Um, and when we talk about that, that is about, um, teachers getting that opportunity, Darcy referenced, about time. Um, it's not a sit and get in the classrooms anymore. It is, we're giving direct instruction, but it's more about the goal-setting that children have, and then the teachers being able to follow up on that. Um, and that's why we continue to see, uh, progressive growth. And then the collaboration with interventionists, the push and model to meet the needs of all students. John also hit upon that, um, and that collaboration that occurs, uh, because the teachers hear those people, those interventionists that have a deeper level of understanding of what it takes to be, um, a literacy instructor, different ways to teach, different ways, uh, to get the children to move and that vice versa. Uh, so we talk about having that toolbox filled, so the interventionist works with the teacher and that teacher works with the interventionist. We're going to math. Um, this year, we were able to have some professional development, um, across our building. Uh, with math, our professional learning community was directed by our building leadership team. Uh, and on our building leadership team, we have a representative from every grade level. So we talk about consistent messaging, uh, and within that professional development, we were be, we were able to dig in a little deeper, uh, with our Bridges math curriculum. And what we ended up finding is that we had areas that we were missing, all right? Uh, and so we have been doing Bridges for years, uh, and, uh, we were instructing Bridges and as students continue to grow, we need to follow suit. So as teachers, we took that professional development and we were able to grow as well. Um, utilization of many different strategies to demonstrate and prove their thinking. So instead of, again, sit and get, here's the math lesson, we're talking about questioning. We're talking about students being able to be creative and demonstrate their learning instead of just writing it down on a sheet of paper, let's do a project. And you can show me, um, geometry, you can show me and demonstrate your understanding of adding, subtracting, multiplying, dividing. Uh, the learning space, individual modular or student tables. Uh, so when we talk about that, that's new furniture, uh, in our fourth grade this year. Um, movable desks in different shapes and allowing for those things, uh, to occur, and that is again filtering down into our third grade, uh, beginning next year. So, um, being creative, using our space creatively, uh, that enhances those small group, large group, um, interactions. Uh, and then after meeting with math instructional coaches, we were able to evaluate and adjust components to offer more opportunities, uh, enabling teams to meet with students who need extra help. Again, a lot of that intervention, meeting the students where they're at, filling those needs, uh, not only with instruction, but the digital tools that we also utilize within our district. Um, engagement and customer satisfaction. Um, and so we at McLean were at 54% of our, um, teachers being at a nine or 10 rating. Um, our goal was, is to get to, um, a level that Green Tree, that Jackson are at. Um, and that is something that, uh, if you look on our slide, we talk about collaborating, problem-solving, celebrating, and working together. Uh, that is something that we oftentimes lose in the day-to-day, uh, because our focus is kids, uh, and we are so hyper-focused on those kids that sometimes we forget about ourselves. Uh, and so that is another thing that we will dig into, uh, in our professional development in August, um, and that is about staff feedback, uh, and how we can best meet the needs of staff. Uh, and so we're going to get there, um, and more importantly, if we were to look at our data, um, with our promoters, from a scale of seven to 10, we're at about 89 to 90%. Uh, so we got, I got some work to do, uh, but we'll get there. And then we talk about safe and secure. Uh, and this is one of those things that I think, uh, we are very proud at McLean, uh, and I just want to be able to be very succinct in my messaging. Uh, so we set a very ambitious goal, uh, last year to get that 97% of our students with zero or one, um, office discipline referrals. Unfortunately, right now, we're at 89.6. Um, and that is nothing other than us at McLean being much more accurate with what we are doing. Um, and so I, I just want to read this to you. As you can see, we have not met our ambitious goal of 90% for the 22-23 school year. In the review of our data over the past year and the year prior, which we based our goal off of, we recognize a discrepancy in our data, particularly in the months of September and October. At the beginning of the 22-23 school year, there was a concerted effort on staff to be more effectively and accurately documenting behavioral incidents at McLean, aligning with the district work done by Emily Melstrand and her team. Although disappointing, we're not going to meet our goal this year, uh, we at McLean have been able to address significant behavioral needs of many of our students through the implementation of earlier, early behavioral interventions. Um, and so what I mean by that in plain English is that those students who struggled in those months of September and October, we were immediately able to go to our subcommittees, our tier one, tier two, um, committees, develop good strategic plans for those students and those students in particular, we had a celebration today, two of them actually, um, won some of our bug awards for the month. So, um, it's a big success, uh, and it's not me, it is staff 100%. Um, we celebrate McLean each and every day, um, and whether it is up our left-hand corner, those are our bug winners every single, uh, week. We celebrate those children. Um, we celebrate our teachers as well. Um, down on the lower portion, we have Tina O'Connor, uh, our librarian, she does flashlight reads with kids. In the middle, you see me surrounded by a bunch of people, that was our running rabbits, uh, in the March, in the month of March. Um, hopefully we'll get to the nicer weather as you can some of us, see some of our students outside in our picnic tables, uh, learning. Um, we have our aid staff upper right-hand corner, when we're short-staffed, we just jump in, all right? Uh, and then I think, uh, the middle, upper middle, a representation of our high school students giving of their time to come and volunteer at the elementary, which is a great connection, uh, for all of our students. That's McLean. Any questions?
Thank you. Questions?
Yeah, I got a couple.
Yeah.
Um, how often do you guys hold, uh, PLC meetings?
Every week.
Okay.
So not only do we have team PLs, professional learning communities, uh, but we have, um, literacy, professional learning committees, um, that meet every month. Uh, and so when you see a lot of the comments that I put on there, um, those teams have been, been very agile. And what I mean by that is as an administrator, as our leadership team set goals last August, um, you know, when we see the needs of our kids change throughout the year, we have to be agile enough, um, to change along with that. Uh, and so my literacy coach, um- And so, my literacy coach is Becky Minor, she does a fantastic job of organizing. We collaborate weekly as well. And so, that really helps move our teachers, but more importantly, our kids forward.
Yeah. And that's, and that's, I believe, what Green Tree does, PLCs every week. But they, if, they might even deep a little, go a little deeper, and they're smaller groups of math and literacy might actually meet weekly also. Is that correct, Mr. Graff?
We're pretty much on the same.
Okay. So I guess I would just suggest, obviously, you know, Green Tree has one of the top math scores. You talk about wanting to be more like Green Tree. I don't know if you guys already do this, if you collaborate with, you know, other PLCs and stuff like that, and see what they're doing differently.
Yeah.
That may obviously be unofficial, or even sit in on some of their meetings and see what they're doing. Because it sounds like, you know, when, they're expecting to fail fast, you know, whatever's happening, they, they, they get to it quick enough, and they're able to adjust if there's a learning issue that's happening with the group of students. And, you know, and that just seems to kind of be working very well for them, obviously. And then, the engagement seems a little low.
Yeah.
I guess, you know, what I see is it kind of looks like you only gave us the nine to 10 ratings. What was the total engagement, though?
Say that one more time.
So this is nine or 10 ratings, what were the other, are there other ratings? I'm just hoping it's not only 54% of your staff.
No, and so, when we are talking about our district engagement survey, that is what we really want to focus on, are those nine and 10s. And I had mentioned just before that if we were to dig a little bit deeper, that seven to 10 range, okay, that's at 90%.
Okay.
Okay? And so, again, it's one of those things where a lot of things, I mean, being the principal, being the director of the building, okay, those are things that lie directly on my shoulders, and I own that. And what my, what my staff needs, that's where we got to dig a little bit deeper.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to make sure that we were getting at least most of the staff engaged.
Absolutely.
So you at least get some better data, so figure out how we can help you if you want.
Yeah.
Thank you. Other comments, questions?
Yeah, I just want to say, I think it's nice to see across the board, star scores increasing in every category, at every grade level, in all three schools that were reported tonight. I think that's something that should be recognized. Obviously, moving those kinds of scores by five to 10, 15% in some of those categories is not a simple feat when you're dealing with that many students, you know, in that objective of testing. So I just want to congratulate you guys on continuing to work towards those goals. And even though the scores aren't where everyone would want to see them, I think it's awesome to see that we're making good improvement, you know, from, from where we were initially, to all the, to all the schools reporting tonight.
I can just make one more point.
Sure.
Because we talk about scores all the time, we look at graphs. And you heard some impassioned talk this evening. And we have really outstanding educators in this district. And they come to work, and they sacrifice each and every day. And so, I would, for the community that's watching, for our new board members, for our veteran board members, rest assured, you have, you have a, a team of 1,000 individuals, whatever that number is, who have these kids' best interests in mind, and they will do whatever it takes in order to get those kids to where they need to be. Okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your presentation. All right. I believe that concludes that item, and so we move to the curriculum committee report. And our committee chair, Melanie Ergot, will give us an update. Melanie?
All right, so the curriculum committee met on April 18th. We received an update on the system program analysis work that was completed during the 2022-2023 school year. The areas currently being reviewed are 4K through 12 assessments, such as like the STAR exam or other exams like that, they're evaluating, you know, whether we continue to move on with those particular ones, or looking into what other ones are out there, and just trying to find the best course for the district. The K through 12 FIED program, the K through 12 math programs. And these will all continue to be reviewed during the, this next school year, 2023-2024, and brought to be implemented in the 2024-25 school year. So we've got a little ways out on that, but it's just nice to hear the progress and updates. And then, they, we also discussed the revisions of the professional learning playbook. There are six district professional learning days with a requirement for 18 hours of professional learning for the professional staff. So it looks like they've got a nice website up and, up and going, and it's a little easier to sign up for the different classes and see what the different offerings are, so that looked, looked good moving forward, so.
Thank you. Any questions for Melanie? Appreciate your report, thank you. We'll move then to the superintendent's report, and Superintendent Wimmer?
Yes. Just a reminder, this weekend, Saturday, April 29th, from 10:00 to 4:00, we've teamed up with West Bend Area Chamber of Commerce to present the All Around the Bend Business Showcase. It's in the Field House at the West Bend High School. So if the parking situation downtown has got you a little anxious, come on out to the high schools, there's plenty of parking. It's giving all of our West Bend businesses and organizations an opportunity to showcase products, services. There's about 80 vendors, including small businesses, large corporations, nonprofits at the event. There'll be musical performances by some of our students, raffles, concessions for sale. Just stop in, learn more, and like I said, especially with kind of the downtown construction and those pieces, getting engaged with your businesses and, and helping recognize those as well. So that's, again, this Saturday, right at the Field House, while you're over, get your Dolphins tickets, because that show's going on as well. And just a great weekend, like I said, anything we can do to support, you know, we were looking with Chamber, how we could support the downtown during the time of construction, and, and continue to support, we will do that. So regarding the book selections, we've heard a lot tonight. Melanie and I had talked just a little bit at the last meeting, and then in the interim, talking about moving that conversation and its associated policies around book selections, the curricular selections, all those pieces to the curriculum. Committee will also move, because it's policy-driven, will move the policy discussion to that. And then we'll have a full conversation with the board, we'll schedule that at our upcoming May meeting. So we will do all of those pieces and have that. Again, if there's any parent, no one should feel like they're forced specifically to read Book 57, which we've heard a lot about, that was a parent permission item. If somehow that is made at home, and you wish not to do that, that is, it is not required, just contact the school, and we'll make sure. But I really welcome those conversations, and it'll be interesting for the board to really dig in out of the gate for some, some critical issues for our community and, and our staff as, as we look at getting materials in front of kids. So just continue to reach out, share feedback, whether it's your board members, your committee members, myself, so that we can take that in and make sure and share it at all those different levels, so. I'd like to recognize, one, I don't know if anyone made the connection, but when Scott Mindle was here, being recognized for retirement, I had spoken about him last time. He is receiving this Saturday morning, American Legion Teacher of the Year Award, and moving on kind of in those rankings for the region and representing at state level. So just a congratulations to him again, helping you make that connection. Also, we have another staff winning an award. Maria Gutierrez-Garola is the recipient of the Stewart of Change Award, which was just presented by the Volunteer Center on April 16th. Maria works in our College Career Center at the high schools. She was nominated by the Executive Director at Casa Guadalupe for work in advancing the volunteer process at Casa. Because of her leadership, Casa Guadalupe has over 100 volunteers now in their database, and that's an impressive accomplishment. She and the team at the College and Career Center have been working to expand business partnerships, so they've been building that database as well, as we kind of promote engagement. So if there's any business partners who want to come and see our schools, Maria's the one who can help you get connected to that, too. Our band will be hosting a spring concert this Wednesday, 7:00 PM, at the Silver Lining Arts Center. And one of the pieces they will perform, City Stigma, was composed by Wes Senior, Connor Marcone. You've heard Connor's name before. He is constantly winning awards and being recognized for his musical abilities and talents. And it's just amazing to have a composer at that level, and for the students to be playing that piece. Another piece they'll perform called World Without End is composed by Richard Smith, a retired teacher of English and History. So it's just really unique to be able to work with onsite composers and bring their works to life. So thank you to Leah Duckert-Kroll and Corey Murphy, and again, that's Wednesday, 7:00 PM. And I mentioned the Dolphins before, and yes, there's a matinee and an evening performance on Saturday. But one of the unique things about our school district, when, when you go to like conventions and things, they always ask you what's unique, and I usually can win with the, hey, two high schools under one roof. And if that doesn't get them, I can always go, I have a synchronized swim team, and they're always stunned. So this is the 60th anniversary of the Dolphins synchronized swim team. They're not competitive, but they are showcase talent. They are made up of both high schools, every student, whether you're an athlete, a swimmer, not. It is a production, and it's kind of that rite of passage when they look back and remember that they were part of Dolphins. So their shows are coming up this weekend at the pool. Thursday, the 27th, at 7:00, Friday night at 7:00, Saturday, as I said, 1:00 PM and a 7:00 PM. Tickets are $12 for adults, 10 for students, eight for seniors, six for children under five. You can purchase those online. So I would urge you to go take part in the anniversary celebration of 60 years of Dolphins. So that was quite an achievement. We also noticed that the, we've got a golf academic award. The West Bend Girls Co-op Golf Team earned honorable mention in the Golf Association of Wisconsin Team Academic All-State Award. Collectively, they as a team achieved at least a 3.25 GPA. Members of that team include Addison Landy, Sidney Clemmons, Eleanor Henshaw, Maddie Bell, and Caleb Bruder. So congratulations to that team. Again, the civics team is advancing. So we have our high school social studies teacher, Mark Drake, started forming teams of students for the Wisconsin Civics Games just last year. Students competed against other teams, answering questions about local, state, national civics for government topics. And at the 2023 regional competition earlier this month, we had 18 students competing on five different teams. And just recently, two of our teams advanced to the state competition, which will be Friday, May 12th, at the Wisconsin State Capitol. So that's really exciting. Members of the state-winning team will each receive a $2,000 scholarship to a Wisconsin college or university of their choice. Students going on to state include Owen Damcott, Abby Lacrim, Danny Zulp, Maya Latour, Grace Mueller, Tyler Roney, Isabella Peskador, and Ethan Tackett. So congratulations and good luck. I'm sure we will have them back for recognition after they represent us at state. And also, a congratulations to the East West Skills USA Chapter. They earned Gold Level for the Chapter of Excellence Program. This means that they are the top Skills USA Chapter in the state. So for Skills USA, students compete in a variety of both career and technical education-related events, and it helps our students prepare for careers, trade, technical, skilled service occupations, and empowers them to be our future workforce. So congratulations to that team as well. And finally, just last Friday, our high schools hosted a large invitational track meet. You saw, again, Scott Mindle was still in his track outfit, he's one of our coaches. But Wes Junior Franklin Confira was named the male track athlete, track and field athlete of the entire meet. He won the 200-meter dash and the 400-meter dash, and was second in the 100-meter dash. Franklin led our team to second place in the meet. So just a congratulations to all those students who are representing. And I would urge anyone, we've got a lot of really great events to take part in, whether it's a concert, or to see your, your probably only state synchronized swim team. Come out and visit, otherwise, visit our businesses that will be showcased Saturday, too. So thank you. That's all I had.
Any questions for Superintendent Wimmer?
I just have a comment. Just thank you for mentioning all the activities and the clubs. It's wonderful to see how involved we are in the community. I want to do one shout-out, because I, our student liaison was at the Kids Free Fishing Clinic. April 14th, we had 529 kids show up, a new record for the community. And we had many high school members, including our student liaison, helping out, teach the kids how to fish.
Awesome.
And kept them off the phones for like six hours, for the most part.
That is no easy feat, and we do have two fishing clubs at Badger and the high school that do both spring and ice fishing as well, so thanks to everyone.
Any other items? All right. So we will move on to discussion items. And for our newer board members, this is the section where normally we receive information, and we get to ask questions, but we don't plan to take any action. And I think all the discussion items tonight have to do with kind of getting us ready to organize ourselves as a board at our next meeting. And Superintendent Wimmer, I believe, is going to walk through all of these.
Correct.
Starting with a review of board operations.
Right, while we do onboarding, and I've met with all of our new board members, just as I met with John and Melanie last year, now that I was saying, now you're veterans, and the others get to be the newbies. We, we go through these pieces, but it's nice to, as a team, talk about the policies that guide you as a board, so I revisit those. So those are listed, they're on our website. And I'll just go through a couple highlights for each, each one, and we can always dig into some more. I would anticipate with, you know, the large number of new people to the board, maybe scheduling some board retreats as we work through and have conversations around kind of our next iteration of goal-setting for the district and all sorts of things. So I look forward to that work together. The first in the series is just talking a general statement around non-discrimination. It's connected to other policies around non-discrimination for students, for staff, the complaint procedure, all of those things. So again, that's deeply connected to some other work. But the 130, and I think everyone realizes this, but the School Board is really representative of the city of West Bend, the village of Jackson, Newburgh, towns of Addison, Barton, Jackson, Polk, Trenton, and West Bend. So in Policy 130, it's just talking about the legal status, who we represent, and then we have maps of those boundaries. So it's a very large geographical area in which we cover as a school district. And it talks about, you're elected, the terms for your service, three years, those pieces. So it's kind of setting the legal framework. The next one, we haven't needed, but it should, a vacancy occur in the board. Let's say someone moved one year into their term, and we need to fill that, that would help guide that process for us. And the next one, we'll, we'll get into a little bit more when we go through officers. But it goes through how we determine that, what the different roles are, and what those procedures are. So I'm going to save that one to dig into in a little bit. The next one is a policy on policies, and it's how we guide policy. And it talks about, there is a specific policy committee. We did have Joel Anger, who has left the board, so I talked about, you know, and we'll talk about kind of committee assignments and structure tonight, so anyone can express interest in that. But that is a specific policy, and you'll see sometimes a mix of the two or three readings. And that depends if we have an opportunity for the full board to hear something. Sometimes there's some procedural, just technical pieces to a policy that could be approved on the second reading. Tonight, you'll see them for third reading. So that's guiding that work, there's also kind of a style guide. We joke a lot in that committee around the Oxford comma, and yes, we use one. But it helps that formatting is, is clear. So people who are interested in kind of the governance and those pieces, I would urge you to consider to join us at policy, and for my current members to continue with their work on policy. The next goes over board member authority, and just talking about you collectively hold your authority. No individual member holds that authority, all your work is done publicly here, in front of, and it's done through motions and those kinds of pieces, but that's your collective authority. You know, you don't have kind of that individual piece of authority, you might be acting as a team. Generally, there's a spokesperson, it's myself, or the board president serves as a spokesperson. When we're doing things like the delegate, we'll talk about that as one of the role, a delegate to WASBE's convention, we actually talk about that as a board first, and we are directing the person who's going to be the spokesperson on behalf of the district. So there's a fair amount of those pieces. And then, just guiding you, which, again, my veteran board members are adept in onboarding our new ones. When you're wearing that board member hat, people might come to you and, you know, to have compliments to share, or some, some critiques. And how do we go through resolving those complaints? We always try and get them connected to, whether it's urging them to have a conversation with the teacher, the principal, or helping them get routed to me, so I can help with that process, and then connect back with you. So investigating and doing all that isn't really the, the role of the board. It's just kind of coming back to staff to do those pieces. But again, it's just a manner of kind of all those pieces we talk about, and, and we do have a closed session tonight. have a closed session tonight. Just there's certain technical reasons you can go into a closed session. That's the one time that our board work is actually closed, we're removed from public eye on those pieces. And then not only in district matters, personnel matters, student matters, those kinds of things, just the discretion and confidentiality of our board, but especially in the times of having a closed session, which we'll go through tonight a little bit, too. Any questions on any of these guiding principles, policies, or anything so far? Great. And again, we've gone through this, and my veterans have certainly been living by these and then just having shared conversation. Know that board members are compensated, and you also have expenses. So if you're attending the January conference on behalf of the board, you know, whether it's your conference attendance, your mileage, those pieces, we just work with you on that. So a lot of times, you'll hear me putting out Peggy, you generally elect Peggy Schmidt, who's the secretary for me generally as the secretary of the board. That's the one position that can sit outside the board, but she'll help you with those arrangements. So she's always kind of looking at that and who's going. She'll get you scheduled and serve in that role. And we do have a general piece around our conduct that we expect of ourselves and our ethics when we're serving and modeling integrity, staying informed, how we serve. Again, this has started in 1967, so long dates before these were even developed. And I remember when we brought this back, they're still true. They still, we pride ourselves on working on that. So I'd have you look at those. If you have any questions about that piece, you can connect with Chris, myself, any board member as well. So looking at, there is one piece of conflict of interest for a board member you should be aware of. You cannot serve on the board and be simultaneously employed in a manner. So I can't hire you as a coach, but you can be a volunteer coach. I can't hire you to do those things, but you are certainly encouraged to be actively involved in schools as a volunteer. That's the only piece that's regulated. There's state statute on that. So if you have any questions about that, just let me know. Electronic communications, we onboarded our new board. We talk about all of our records, our public records, whether it's myself, whether it's any of you in your capacity. As board members, you have the ability to have, one thing I always talk about with the public or I remind the board, especially early in your days of service, if someone emails the full board, the board can't respond to all people. They may respond to you individually, but again, the board is very cognizant of any time there's a majority of them together, we don't want to have a walking quorum. So you'll see me post events like our upcoming retirement and recognition celebration. I might have a quorum there. You'll see me asking, what's my attendance? You know, we're going to have a military signing event. I would post those things. So there's just some pieces around your general presence together as well as that electronic communication. And then we serve as a custodian of records for you. And I always advise people, as does Tim Harder when he onboards, sometimes they might know you personally, right? So people might check in with you via personal devices around some board business. Your best bet is just forward it on to your board email and say, oh, I do my board business in this, because then we have to take on the responsibility of being the custodian of records for that. Otherwise, you need to be the custodian of those things. So if anyone's got any ongoing questions, just let us know. And then we go through regular board meetings. We have, we're unique in that we have two boarding meetings a month. Sometimes you'll have a, just a kind of committee of the whole. That's how we treat our meetings, where we do a lot of discussion and try and bring those items unless it's procedural before the board for discussion purposes, before we're asking you for action. So we had sunset some former language around committees and have a couple standing committees, but we do two meetings a month of the full board because there's so much that really is representative of the full board. And then it's not splitting up where you have like five, six committee assignments. So committee structure is something that we'll talk about a little bit more when we get to that. There is an annual board meeting. When we get closer to that, that's going to be in September, we'll prep you for that meeting, what that is, how it's different than a regular meeting. And we have procedures for those pieces. And then you've got some general operating procedures and how you can vote. The one time you can vote with a secret ballot is upcoming, when it's when you're doing board officer positions, okay? So we'll just look at that. Otherwise, it goes through some of the higher level Roberts Rules of Order is what we go through. And Chris is the board president, myself, we serve as what we would call the parliamentarian to help oversee. So don't get tripped up as new board members around not sharing how to go about. You hear us, is there a motion? You know, or like, hey, I want to do this, like, how would I go about that? We're here to help you navigate that. And then rules of order, so it just talks about, again, the board president's responsibility in that piece. And then the Roberts Rules is reinforced, too. So again, we'll go through some committees. We also have public participation at our board meetings. You saw us do that tonight. One, public participation isn't required. I've never been in a board that, a school board that does not have that in some form or fashion. We have that at our board meetings, so that's twice a month. So again, we've extended, we've got two meetings a month instead of one. And then we do public participation there. And then we vote to extend that time to honor people who have come out to speak on behalf of something and do that. And you saw us do that. So again, we can suspend that so that we can honor those who wish to speak. We do have the ability to participate via technology. Let's say you've got a work conference, you've got, you're out of state, you can phone in and participate in the meeting during that. When we do that, you'll hear us ask for roll call votes, meaning we'll call on you individually. There's a couple other cases where we'll do roll call votes in and out of those closed sessions, but you'll hear that difference. So just let the board president, myself, know, and we can set up those systems for you. Earlier notice is always welcome, but you can do that. The only time you can't participate electronically is in the annual meeting, an expulsion hearing, or some kind of disciplinary hearing. You should be there in person around that. So again, just let us know. Things come up, we're happy to have the technology to make that so that you're able. And the last one sits in the 100 series. It's something unique to us. It just shows that when we look at high school configuration with the two schools under one roof, that details how you have to go through those conversations, and it results in a non-binding referendum requirement. So that would be on a ballot. Are there any questions around kind of those operational pieces? Again, we've had the opportunity to spend time with our new members to go through that. If any question should arise, just reach out to any of the veteran board members, myself, as we move through that. Great.
All right.
With that said, I can, this whole next section is kind of welcoming our new members and getting our operations set. So one of the things that you do need to do is approve a calendar. And we do kind of have a general structure. We meet generally the second and fourth Monday of each month, beginning at 5:30. We've also historically met on Mondays. So in the past, some months have been shifted to the first and third to avoid event conflicts. So if we were to follow past practice, so now would be the time to discuss calendar. Is the day right? Is the time right? Shall we follow past practice? What do these dates look like for you? That kind of thing. That would be the point to have that discussion now. So I don't know if you want to unpack kind of day of the week, the time, things working for you in the structure, not working.
So generally speaking, Mondays, 5:30 PM, does that generally work for the group? I see nods. I see nods, so I think we'll stick with that.
Okay.
Thank you, Superintendent Wimmer, as it relates to the individual dates, if people look at their work calendars and see an objection between now and next time.
Yeah. We've got the ability to schedule around that. So we looked at when spring break was falling, those kind of pieces, to do some shifts where necessary. But for your consideration, I would propose the following dates. That would put us at September 25th, being that annual meeting, to kind of fall in line with past practice that we had. So I would urge everyone to just take another look and see if there's something that's jumping out to you, but otherwise, we would formally bring that back for adoption. Know that the board meetings, remember, our year goes from July 1st through June 30th. So we already have the May and June meetings set. So those are set, so it's just for consideration in that new year. So I'd urge you to take a look and just let me know if you're seeing any conflicts. Great. The next piece is officers' terms and election. So we need to reorganize as a board. So every time someone takes a seat, we reorganize for the year, and you'll elect your positions in order. So the president, that person largely works on the agenda development with me, and then also chairs the meeting, runs that, serves as the parliamentarian of those pieces. So then you have the vice president stepping in when the president's absent, unable to do those pieces. You have the clerk. Tony had been our clerk. Melanie has been serving as our interim clerk on those pieces. You're supporting, we're recording minutes, they're doing the official documentation of those, signing off on things, certain reports that we have to submit to the Department of Public Instruction, et cetera, require clerk signatures. So the clerk is really executing those functions. Once the board's taken action, approved minutes, the clerk's signing off, and we're filing on behalf. Oversaw the election canvas. You know, different duties of that nature are for the clerk. And then Kurt has served as treasurer, so just again, some financial pieces, digging into those, working with Andy Sarno, and then signing off on a lot of the financial pieces. So does anyone have any questions about any of the roles? So I think what we do now is we give everyone an opportunity to express interest in a role so that we can set up process for our next meeting in that. Again, you might be thinking about it. You don't have to declare it right now in this moment, but if you do have an interest in something, what'll happen at the next meeting is someone would nominate, right, on behalf. We would check with that person to make sure they accepted the nomination for that, and they, we would proceed. We would see if there was any other people. If there were multiple people with the same role, then that's when you could do ballots. So again, it's really something for the team now to think about different positions. There's plenty of work to go around on a board, whether it's in an officer position or in the committee structure. So with that said, is there anyone interested in being the president?
I'm happy continuing in the role, but that should not, people should not be discouraged from also expressing interest.
Sure.
I'm happy to continue if the board would like me to.
Okay. Anyone interested in the role of vice president?
I am.
Very good.
Thanks. Anyone interested in the role of clerk?
I'm happy to continue in that role if everyone else is good with that. I've been the interim for a while and it's been okay.
She's like an old pro now.
And thank you for your service, Melanie. Appreciate it.
Anyone interested in being the treasurer?
Kurt, you've been our treasurer.
I'll tackle the same thing. I've been the treasurer, I believe, now for, I should date myself, two years, I count three. So but if anyone else expresses interest, I don't mind supporting other people as well, so, and sharing, so. But I would, I would be if anyone else is interested, so.
Yeah. So as I said, if you've got any questions about the different roles, if you'd like to express additional interest, you can certainly talk with the board president, myself. And then again, the procedure will go each role. So first, we'd elect the president, and we'd go through, I'd ask for nominations, someone would nominate, and then we'd go through that and see if there's multiples, then we would vote and do those pieces. But it sounds like we've got people kind of interested in different avenues with no overlap. So that would be our process that we would go through. Any questions on process?
I think, as you said before, Superintendent Wimmer, if someone changes their mind and wishes to throw their hat into one of the ring, that's fine, too. We would do that at the next meeting.
Absolutely. But like I said, we certainly would work off the expression of interest tonight to proceed with nominations. So just let me know. And the other piece is around board committees and delegate assignments. So we have some specialized delegates. John is serving as our Cooperative Education Service Agency Board of Controls member. They've set their kind of big convention, and then he does some other pieces. John, might you be interested in continuing as that? You can say no.
I don't really know how effective I was at that.
That's fine.
Their meetings are in Appleton, so if anybody likes to drive.
Perfect. So it sounds like that might be up for grabs. I would urge you to connect with John around his experience with that, or I can certainly get you in touch with Ted Nitske, is the head at CISA. So if you have any questions around what that might entail, just let me know, and I can help you get connected so you can learn a little bit more about that. Like I said, they have the big annual gathering and then some monthly pieces as well. We also have the Wisconsin Association of School Boards Convention. We have a delegate and an alternate. So somewhere around November, December, we usually discuss in December, the Wisconsin Association of School Boards will release all their resolutions that'll go before a representative, a delegate from every single district. So we'll talk about every single resolution, does it have impact for us? And then we'll advise our delegate how we want you to vote on behalf of the board. That convention is in January. I haven't seen the exact dates yet, but we would like to have someone on deck to be the formal delegate and the alternate for that. Anyone interested in pursuing that at this time?
I would be interested in pursuing that.
Okay. And if you have any questions, Joel Angert has been the delegate in the past, or myself, I can walk you through those. So just let me know. Like I said, you might be thinking about it and unsure. We'd also be seeking an alternate, just in case. Wonderful. Head Start, we've had board members part of Head Start. Head Start is a unique piece for our district. Generally, an outside agency runs Head Start. It's unique for our districts to do that. Melanie and I have had conversations prior about Head Start and serving on that committee and the work that it entails. We're serving students who were giving a Head Start to school opportunities for a variety of reasons, whether it be ability, socioeconomic, any of those pieces. So if there's anyone else interested in supporting Head Start, let me know. But I know Melanie and I have talked about that as well, so.
Good.
Now, I'm just not volunteering, are people?
Oh, no, no.
Which I will do if I need to. Wonderful. That takes us to our existing committees and structure. We have two standing committees. Like I said, we're using this unique two-meeting-a-month structure right now to tackle a lot of things as kind of a committee of the whole. But then we have two standing committees in policy and curriculum committee. And you could hear us talk about and forecasting some work around book selection that's going to hit actually both committees, right? Because any kind of book selection, all those resource pieces are going to sit in the instructional side, but they're also going to sit in the policy side as we look at that language. So I'd be seeking people who are interested in policy. Policy, how we have run, and the committee can gather and kind of talk about this. We've been doing a substantial amount of cleanup on policy to get us back on a more consistent cycle of that. We're just about done with that initial piece. We've got the eight and nine hundreds, and then we circle back to the three hundreds, which are all the instructional. Certainly, we're going to be front-loading some of these items that we've talked about and heard about from our community. But is there anyone interested? We meet whenever we can, and we kind of compare calendars and set those because we've been doing kind of that cleanup. I would anticipate in a few months' time, we'd be able to get to a more consistent schedule for policy, so please don't let that deter you. Our team has been meeting kind of any day of the week, kind of, we try and target like four to six and get as much done as we can. Members include John Donaldson and Chris Weigert. Joel was both on the committee, and he also served as chair. So I'd be seeking a chair as well as participants. Is there anyone interested in that?
I was going to say, and there's no limit to the number of members that want to be on the committee, correct?
Or is not.
So John, you and I have served on that committee. I'm interested in continuing to serve. Are you interested in continuing to serve?
Yeah. I was going to say, I've bent some elbows before.
Yeah, I would look. I'd be interested in looking into it.
Okay, great. If you've got any questions or any of those pieces, like I said, I can walk you through kind of the work that we've done so far and kind of the work ahead. But we're really been diligently working to get a cycle before so that we can bring some consistency to that. And then curriculum committee, and when I met with our new friend- And then Curriculum Committee, and when I met with our new friend Melanie was like the power of one. So thank you for her kind of holding the fort. I know, Chris, you, you kind of were the utility player at a couple of the last meetings. And when I onboarded, I know June and Kelly, you initially expressed some interest, which I had already shared. Is there anyone else who may be interested in the Curriculum Committee as well?
I'll say I'm not disinterested, but.
Thanks for that.
No, no, no.
So we'd look to formalize that. And again, I would work with whatever team and help you determine who a Chair is. Melanie's been serving in that role as well. So I don't know, John, if you'd want to consider Policy Chair. Chris, you can like do rock, paper, scissors for it. Just let me know and we can figure that out.
Chad opens it either, yeah. Yeah, we'll figure, we'll figure it out.
Chad, I, you could be Chair, but you probably want to hold off in your first year, your first committee, trying to steer that one, so.
I do it.
Yeah, Melanie did, and really found her way, kind of.
I'm a little lost.
Yeah, I don't recommend it, but you certainly could. Like I said, we could do rock, paper, scissors for it. So again, the whole point is to have a discussion to support reorganization that's going to lead us in the work forward. I'm really excited to work with the teams. If anything changes, your interest, whether it's, you know, one of the roles, committee, et cetera, just reach out to myself or Chris, and then we can formalize this at our next Board meeting. And then, yes, I will be recombobulating all your seats as, as we look to those new roles too. So thank you for expressing interest. I really appreciate it. Any questions about those committees, delegate assignments?
No, just wanted to express my thanks. Everyone stepped up in a, in a different way here, and I really appreciate that. That really helps us with an effective Board and keeping meetings moving forward. So thank you for that.
Thank you as well.
All right. So are we on to action items, Superintendent Wimmer? I think so, all right. So last time, we had a number of discussion items, and I believe our, our newer Board members were in attendance and so heard all of this because.
So not only did, were they in attendance at the last meeting, but we did walk through the draft agenda with all the Board members and go through background. So as we go through, you know, on both the out-of-states, there, there's been no change since that prior presentation. So if you want to take us through those items, we could.
Sure, we'll go through those. Excellent, all right. So on the first item, the out-of-state travel for debate. Sounds like Superintendent Wimmer, you mentioned that there were no changes compared to the prior information that we received at the last meeting? Are there any questions that any Board member has about this item? Hearing none, I would move to approve the out-of-state travel for debate as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Melanie. Motion in second to approve the out-of-state travel for debate. Final discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries.
We have a very excited debate member in the audience.
Excellent. Have a good time. Do us proud. All right, out-of-state travel for orchestra. Superintendent Wimmer, are there any changes to the presentation?
No additional changes.
Any questions from the Board members? Hearing none, I would move to approve the out-of-state travel for orchestra as presented. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, John. Motion in second to approve out-of-state travel for orchestra. Final discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. We're on to insurance broker services, and I believe Mr. Andy Sarno, our Assistant Superintendent of Business and Operations, is going to walk us through that item. I'll just make a note, Mr. Sarno, as we had talked about last time, the candidate's under consideration. One of them is an agent for the company that I work for, Westbin Mutual Insurance Company. And I think it's simply appropriate for me to abstain from the vote. I will call the role and such, but I will be abstaining from this vote. Ms. Grigor, I think you, as you work for the same employer that I do.
Yes, I will abstain as well.
Mr. Donaldson, I believe you and I spoke in advance that your employer also works, so.
Correct.
So what a way, what a way to indoctrinate our first Board members, so.
All four of them write for my employer.
Yeah, so, you know.
So no pressure on the other four.
Yeah, I was just going to say, you know, it's, it's an insurance town, so. So only bring that up just so that the others, others know. I will, like I said, administer the motion in second that others, others make, but I will be abstaining, as will these other two. With that, please proceed with your presentation.
Thank you so much. I appreciate the opportunity to share some information. Two weeks ago, where we discussed the topic at that point in time was the due date for a request for proposal. Prior backing up to that, I had been at least 10, possibly 15 years since we'd gone through that process for these insurance services, meaning property, liability, cyber, auto, those coverages, not on the benefit side. So at that point, four weeks ago, um, excuse me, two weeks ago, we had four vendors that had submitted responses. And over the last two weeks, have spent a large amount of time, if you look back on my table, I think there's at least about three inches of submitted documents that we've gone over and spent a lot of time reviewing. It was a 20-page RFP document, so we asked for some pretty specific information because we wanted to get this right. We wanted to make sure that this was putting the district in a good spot to make sure, because where we have exposures to risk, this is the coverage that helps provide some security for that. So this is a $560,000 in the current year budget expenditure on the district. Let's, let's make sure we do its due diligence. So these are in the attachment that was in Board documents. In alphabetical order, from left to right, M3 in blue, as well as Willis Towers Watson, those are the two incumbents. So we've worked with them for a number of years. In full disclosure, I've worked with all four of these agents in one capacity or another in my tenure that I've been in education over 20 years. So again, just from a simply alphabetical standpoint, cost was the first factor of 50 points, $20,000 for M3, and then approximately 40 to 50,000, $45,000 to $50,000 for the other three. To calculate the number of points for this, I took our current cost of insurances and then came up with a blended rate for the brokering plus the insurance coverages. When I just did it on a numerical standpoint alone of 20,000 versus 50,000, completely skewed. So I felt, and I feel strongly, that the, the way that I rated this portion, since it was the largest, brought out that, that slight difference of $30,000, again, on a half a million dollar expense. References, 20 points. This is where each of the vendors provided five references. Had, had really good discussions with both business offices as well as human resources from districts. And then as well, one of the last pieces, again, worth five points each for, for different categories, that extent and comparability of references. Just as an example, USI right now, they're the pink. They don't have any current insurance districts that they work with. And so it was very difficult to judge because it was all in the benefits. They're a very strong benefit company. Again, that's the capacity that I worked with them in. But, so rated fairly low. Did a good job, though, with their references. They, they're a very strong company. But again, as taking a look at R&amp;R versus Willis Towers Watson. Willis Towers Watson, our current team that we have, we're the only school district that they, this team encompasses, that they facilitate this. So again, rated just a little bit lower on that end. But references for M3, again, continue to be strong. Service and support had three different categories for five points each totaling 15. Rated across the board, again, very strong in all four categories. Utilized the submission that each of the, the four firms had presented. Qualifications and experience, again, utilized the submission. So when everything came to total, reviewed, cross-referenced, made sure that we had everything done. M3 is the, the recommendation to move forward with. Would be a three-year term, plus two potentially one-year additions if both, both sides of the contract would agree to continue totaling up to five years. But rated at 99.5 points. Again, alphabetically from left to right, R&amp;R had their strengths, 94.5. Willis Towers Watson, our incumbent, 94.5. Yomar was just lagging. They're just not quite in the industry. They just started doing this in October. But I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
I'd say.
Oh, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I just, the total cost of M3, I know that you have a cost analysis up here, but the total cost is at or under our budget expectation?
Correct, yep.
Okay.
Current year budget is approximately $50,000. So the other three, we're, we're at where we are right now. Our M3 knows who we are. I think they're changing their book of business just a little bit, and they want to keep us as a customer. They're willing to take a decrease.
Some concessions. Do you have any concerns that this doesn't adequately or appropriately meet the district needs?
All books of service that M3 covers, who they're able to market, all the different lines of coverage to, are AM Best rated. I have no concern with M3. They have a solid history. Now, that was one of the other. As we look back, each one of these four firms has an excess of 50 years' history in, in the industry.
And obviously, we see the ratings here, but do you also find M3 to be the, the organization you most support as well?
I do.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
John?
Yeah, I was just looking at the RFP, and I see the, the limits. So it says required, mandatory required limits. Was there a determining factor of limit values? You know, was, was M3 higher limits compared to the others?
Yeah, so that's actually the insurance that we require them to hold.
Right.
And so all of them met or exceeded that minimum requirement for their insurance. And again, why do they have that? In case they were to screw up and mislead us on some type of claim, which again, I don't feel that that would be, but they, they have adequate coverage.
Right.
Yep, yeah, great question, thank you.
Other questions? Kurt?
You mentioned, Andy, it's a three-year term, and what, so extra years, so there, they went down. What's year two and three look like on, on increases that they could do? Or is this a 20K year flat rate?
We have yet to finalize a contract. Tomorrow, I will give notice after action is taken this evening with, wherever we land, with what the Board approves. But I would make sure that we put ourselves in a position that the annual increases fall in line with Consumer Price Index, revenue limit changes, those types of things, that don't put us in an adverse position.
Okay, thanks.
I wouldn't anticipate that year one's 20 and year two would be a significant increase.
Thank you. Other thoughts, questions? So Mr. Sarno, it's, I'm assuming the administration is recommending to approve the insurance broker services as presented. That be a recommendation?
Please.
I can make that motion for you, Chris.
Thank you. Chad?
Make a motion as stated by Chris for recommendation using M3 for further consideration and finalization.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I second that.
All right, very good. Kurt? We have a motion in second to approve the insurance broker services as presented and select M3. Any final discussion? All right, hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Are there any abstains? I abstain.
I abstain.
All right, excellent. Then this motion will carry with four voting yes, zero no, and the three of us abstaining. Thank you, appreciate it. And thanks for allowing us to kind of navigate the intricacies of potential conflicts of interest, so.
Understand, smart approach, thank you.
Thank you. I would just say, now that it's selected, I'm familiar with all these organizations. They're very good.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
So they're very good.
Thank you.
All right, we're on then to early learning, early learning literacy adoption. And Dr. Reese is going to walk us through this agenda item. Welcome back.
Thank you. I'm just going to pull up the right presentation here. So this was presented at the last Board meeting, and we walked through the presentation. So I'm really just wondering if there's any questions or any feedback in terms of the early learning literacy adoption?
I think one, one piece to clarify was working with the committee chair around intention to survey and talk about. So while there would be an adoption, it really working, because this is unique, that it's early learning. So we have some programs that are hosted by the district and some that are partner sites. So it really bring uniformity around resource and expectation. But Melanie really brought up and will continue and proceed with surveying around implementation, how we can support kind of those pieces. And I know Matt and Jamie Mossam, our two Directors of Early Learning, would be poised to work at the Director level with their staff. That was, I think, one of the point of discussions.
Thank you. John?
I'll just add, so in the reviews, obviously, you saw that some of the books were not appropriate for school these age kids. How can we be assured that they're, we're not approving them?
Are you, there was one book that we determined that we would not be using. Is that the book you're referring to?
Well, I see a couple in here. The Farmer Duck, the family book. There was a couple that says not appropriate for pre-K or in general. And one was adult sexual content, does not belong in pre-K. I mean, there was, so there was two right off the top here.
So we did walk through that feedback. We did investigate the feedback and give, you know, certain notes and things. We did agree at Curriculum Committee that the book that would be removed would be the family book, and that book would be used with other, or that unit would be used with other resources. We didn't through Curriculum recommend that any other books be pulled out. There were, if you look in the feedback, hold on, I can pull it up too.
I see the comments for the second one. Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, I don't think I have the comment thing up here. But there were, there were several books that were reviewed that there were kind of multiple viewpoints on. So some that were, people said, don't, we don't recommend this book, and some that people said, this is a great book. So we kind of went back and forth on some of those other books. So we tried to, from the district perspective, just give an overall kind of look into the book and looked up like Amazon reviews and different things to just give feedback on the book overall. And we did come to agreement at Curriculum Committee that the one book, the family book, would be one that we would not be using.
And you two are comfortable with this?
I just wanted to add some comments, because I know I was pushing for the survey and such. But kind of after some more conversation and learning, you know, the 4K partner sites, everybody's already using probably all different things. It just, it, it made sense to proceed and, you know, have a uniform curriculum across, you know, each different site, and that we've reviewed, and, you know, we know what's in there. And so I feel comfortable with the content, with the removal of that one book. And, and like you did say, there were some books where it was, you know, just seeing from different points of view, different backgrounds of different kids. One might have looked like, oh, this is a really heavy topic. But then from another point of view, it's like, oh, we can see how this is really positive. And so I'm, I, I'm approving, you know, also of just removing the one book, so. Just wanted to add that.
Just one follow-up. So I, do we get a hard copy and a digital copy of both, of the books?
When they're out for public review, is that what you mean?
No, when we purchase for, for this, when we approve this.
When we purchase, this is a hard copy purchase. They're actual kits, and I do have a picture of what that looks.
Because I just know sometimes we can say we're not taking a book, but we still have the download for it because it comes with the package, so. Okay.
Right. Then in relation to what Melanie was saying about the survey, there's been an ask for serving our case six staff to just find out where they're kind of at with their literacy resources. And we agreed to, to do, take this part separate from that. And so we will bring those results back to the Board after we get that survey out and done. Another great thing that Melanie brought up is, this is a like brand-new, level-setting set of resources for this team. So right now, because we have district sites and partner sites, this is a chance for them to all be at the same level, using the same materials, and be just aligned systemically. And so that's a really great opportunity for this team.
Just want to thank you and your, and your team for putting in a lot of work on this. And also, Melanie, the Curriculum Committee, I know from the snippets that I attended, there was a lot of really, really good discussion on it, and so appreciate that as well. Other thoughts, questions? Hearing none, I would move to approve the early, early learning literacy adoption as presented. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Melanie. Motion in second to approve the early learning literacy adoption as presented. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Dr. Reese, I think you have the next item, which is social studies, grades five through eight.
I do. So this was also brought forward at the last Board meeting. This is really to just take a look at the units of study that were created off of the new social study. This is really to just take a look at the units of study that were created off of the new social studies resources that were adopted last while it was last May and implemented at the beginning of the school year. There's approximately 30 some units for the team to look through and to review. And we're just looking for approval on those units.
And you provided electronic links in the materials, so.
Yeah, they're actually in the slides if it helps if I go there.
Great.
They're linked in here and all the units are available for viewing.
Great. Any questions, thoughts?
Just want to add a comment. These these units are basically kind of just like a little overview, a brief like summary. So we don't necessarily know every detail of what's in them, but just kind of what is being taught at each unit, a brief overview.
Thanks. All right, I'd move to approve the social studies grades five through eight unit plans as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Kelly. Motion and second to approve the social studies grades five through eight unit plans as presented. Final discussion. Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any oppose? Motion carries. And then we are on to English Language Arts High School Course Revisions. Dr. Reese, you're on a roll.
I am. So last board meeting, we had a very energetic Kristin Becker and Haley Doherty present to us their ideas for I would say renewing and revising their English department at the two high schools. They presented a few courses to update, a few courses to sunset, and a course to modify and kind of change a title and bring in some new literature and things like that. This plan would go in effect for the 2425 school year. The way course curriculum curriculum guides work, it takes a year for these changes to take place. Because students have to sign up for the courses the year before, and then they actually take the courses the next year. So this would be courses and course revisions for the 2425 school year.
So I sat through the curriculum committee as well, the the presentation, and thought it was very, very well done. And I appreciate the idea that there are multiple paths for successful completion of the English curriculum that align perhaps better to students' interests and help achieve better outcomes. I think that was very, very important. So I am supportive of this. Other questions, other thoughts? Chad?
Yeah, I just want to say that I appreciated the report last time. I'm definitely in favor of this. I think it's wonderful that you guys are taking a proactive approach at trying to allow students more options that are elective. I feel like that absolutely will engage students more so and pique their interest more so than a forced path for the first three years of four. So yeah, I think this is great. And I think you did a good job of taking into consideration that we're not trying to just take an easy way out, that all of the courses do push students in their own respects. So I'm I think this is great. I appreciate you guys doing this.
Thank you. They worked hard.
I just have a comment also. I really agree that I do like the the new setup and having the more options. And this is this vote is just on that particular piece, right? Because I know there was talk of some new new books or whatever for the new modern lit class. And that would not be in this vote. That would be at a future meeting, correct?
Correct.
See a clarification, Melanie. Thank you. Other thoughts? All right, hearing none. I'd move to approve the English Language Arts High School Course Revisions as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Make a chat motion to approve the English Language Arts High School Course Revisions as presented. Any final discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thank you again to your team for the work on this. This was a lot of heavy lifting as well and is very much appreciated.
Thank you for your support.
We next are on to occupational therapy and physical therapy services.
This was a previously presented item. There's been no changes in that. Just looking to formalize that agreement for services future forward.
Excellent. And Melanie's available to Emily. I'm sorry.
It's so close. Looking at one, saying the other. I know you're I know you're speaking about me. She's available if you have questions.
Yes, appreciated. Thank you for coming to the podium. Any questions on this on this item? Thoughts, observations?
From my notes from last time we met, I remember that this was they provided excellent service, low turnover, high retention. They were a great staff and the rates were staying the same. So this is an exciting vote for us to support you.
All right, I've moved to approve the occupational therapy and physical therapy services as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
We'll give that one to Melanie. You eke that one out. Motion and second to approve the occupational therapy and physical therapy services as presented. Any final discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any oppose? That motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Onto the Wisconsin School Nutrition Purchasing Cooperative. And Mr. Sarno is available to answer questions.
Available if there's any questions. But again, this is our ability to enter into a cooperative for some combined buying power. No changes from the previous discussion.
My recollection is this costs us $300 and saves us a lot more.
Adds a nice layer for Tom to have a network to connect with as well, so.
Questions on this item? I move to approve the Wisconsin School Nutrition Purchasing Cooperative as presented. Is there a second? Thank you, John. Motion and second to approve the Wisconsin School Nutrition Purchasing Cooperative as presented. Any final discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any oppose? The motion carries. Thank you. Well, Superintendent Wimmer, we're back to you. It's time for policy third reading.
Policy third reading in action. So if you look, there's some different buckets of policy. So we can choose to approve the policies from the 400 series as presented. For several rounds now, we've had no additional comment question about this slate of policies. But you do have some just updating the data review, some with revision, some with addition, which is expanded understanding, and some for removal. So again, the board in this, you could choose to approve policies as presented. You could choose to approve the policies for review as presented or revision and do it by category. Again, knowing that there was no additional discussion, questions, et cetera, you you could move them forward as a slate if you would so choose.
Sure. So with that, are there any board members that have any concerns or questions on any of the items on the list, whether they're review, revision, addition, or removal? And we can start there. Questions, thoughts, concerns? And again, this is our kind of third time through, which is again, for our new board members is why we do that, to give lots of visibility and opportunity for the public to comment, for board members to comment. We've been through that. Sounds like there are no additional concerns. So I would move to take these as a slate. I would move to approve the policies from the 400 series as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
John, thank you. Motion and second to approve the policies from the 400 series as presented. Any final discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any oppose? Thank you. That motion carries. And those policies as listed will be reviewed, revised, added, and removed respectively. Thank you. We move then to 2022, 2023 revenues and expenditures in the aggregate through March 31, 2023. And we invite Mr. Sarno back to the podium.
Yep, this is one of those items where it is presented and accepted by the board. It's something that Andy periodically presents. He put together kind of a little onboarding training just to orient our new board members to the form, those pieces. But he's happy to take questions and walk you through that piece as well.
And just as a quick follow up, on occasion, this will show up in a consent agenda, correct?
Yeah, the off months from the quarterly. So this is one of the quarterlies through nine months, both of our fiscal year as well. It's about three quarters of the way through our school year, the off month. So months two and three within those quarters fall under the consent. Little bit more summary information, just broken up by fund. But really happy to be able to share this information. It means a lot. Two years ago, when we were doing a debt refinance, our debt rating call with S and P, they'd even brought this up and made a comment in there. It's it's important for transparency. And yes, it is a mechanism to be able to look and find outliers. But there's just a lot of value in this. So I really do appreciate it. Have this information broken out by fund. It totals on the top of page one, all of the disaggregated information. Fund 10, which is our general fund, revenues in green. I think that's kind of a salmony color, expenditures in in red. What we or tan, what we do is we take a look at this year's budget to actual through this point in time. Look at that percentage, both on revenues as well as expenditures. Same period of time for last year, revised budget this time. So the board took action last May or June to revise the budget. So disclosure on that. But again, expenditures through that same period of time, percentage. And then comparing those percentages to percentage, just trying to track and just make sure that our things on track the way that we believe they should be. On occasion, you'll see some variances where we might have that third payroll of the month, since we have an every other week payroll that might hit just a little bit differently. But I like to point out comments on the bottom of each bracketed section. Any comments on the revenues or expenditures and just making sure that we're sharing information? In general, for this entire document through all funds, I don't have any items of concern. Spending is a little bit slow when we look at historical information. But over the last two years, throughout all funds, we have a little bit of a delay. People are still focusing on learning. A little spending is almost a second thought, which isn't isn't a terrible situation to be in, just making sure that we are spending the money that we plan on because that's what a budget is, is a living spending document. It's a plan. But as well, just making sure that our the delays, some of the shipping costs, some of the durations from when we order something until that's wrapped up, we are seeing that a little bit, much like we have over the last couple of years. So nothing new, but yet at the same time, as we approach the end of the fiscal year, that can be an issue as we try to procure something. If it's not on arrival and paid for, things do get moved from one fiscal year to the next by our auditors as we wrap up the year. But general fund, which is the majority of our activity. Next area is I shared in the screencast file, which I appreciated the opportunity to to share that with you. These are areas that are student related. We have a gift fund that's really student orientated, where they do their fundraising. If somebody did donate money to a school, it's all logged in this fund. Special education, which is our Fund 27. So these are all IEP driven services that we provide to students. Has to balance out both on the revenue and expenditure throughout the year. We transfer a fair amount. This $9.3 million that I'll highlight, that takes place as a part of the audit. So that comes from the general fund. And you saw that as an expenditure here in the inter-fund transfers. Fund 29, again, is Ms. Melstrand had presented some information previously, our Head Start countywide program. Spending is up just a little bit. We do have some additional funds, our COVID federal related dollars that we're spending and wrapping up appropriately. I'm very happy across the board with our grants to date. Throughout the year, we've done a very nice job claiming those grant dollars. Interest rates are there now, so we're actually earning money on those. So we've been very diligent about that. As you can see, Fund 29 is example, we're about $250,000 more than we were last year, even though our spending isn't too far off. Our non-referendum debt, which the board does have authorization to enter into debt without the approval of the constituents. There's certainly some requirements around that. But nearing the end of that, in fact, only only have a very short period of period of time until that's completed. But those debt payment schedules are taking place according to the schedule. Our non, excuse me, our referendum debt, Fund 39, we're done levying dollars. As far as we know, it'll be dependent on interest rates. But that's even favoring well. But compared to last year, it looks a little bit skewed because we did have a debt finance as well as we defeased some debt. So those dollars from last year are very difficult to compare. But again, what we've levied and what we're spending is is on track with our payment schedule for our referendum debt. Our 40s funds, so these are our capital dollars that we set aside for facilities are all on track. We don't, that first one is where we mainly spend the dollars that's approved at the annual meeting. Our capital improvement trust, interest is doing very well. We have money set aside in a fund balance or an equity account. Not planning on spending any of that this year. And then as well, it's just keeping this Fund 49, the Barton proceeds, Barton Elementary proceeds, $540,000. I just don't want to lose track that that money is there. That's why I disclose that. Fund 50 is our nutrition, so those breakfasts and lunches. This is the first year that we'd gone off of the free meals since the last two years had taken place from the federal reimbursement. I've been reviewing financials with Mr. Demsky, the the director of the program. We're doing well. We want to make sure that we end the year well. But Badger-Silverbrook participation is up. We're working on some changes at the high school. So just making sure that we're monitoring that. They do have a fairly sizable fund balance in this account due to the pandemic dollars, that federal reimbursement. But we want to make sure that the use of that is meaningful moving forward. So to invest in the program, either through quality of the meals or even the equipment that we're able to purchase. So doing well. Our OPE, which is other post-employment benefits. So this is the district's portion of a pension that has been set up for retirees. Retiree payments are doing well for their health continuation. Our interest income is wonderful. Again, just making sure that we're and that's due to those dollars that are sitting in equity or fund balance. But the transfer of this $1.55 million, we'll be talking about that here soon because that typically doesn't take place until mid-July. Last couple of areas, our community services fund, which is Fund 80. This is what I call things outside of a typical school day. We disclose all the programs, all the services at the annual meeting. That's a requirement of this. But again, it's doing well. We have an increase this year due to the amount that was levied. We had, I think it was in at the October meeting where we levied an additional $200,000. We've not spent those to date. And I don't believe we will by fiscal year end, but that money stays in this fund for future use. Last area is our, I think this is our boys hockey team, I apologize. Boys hockey team wrapping up the year. They do have a little bit of excess funds at this point in time, but we reconcile this to the penny. And those excess dollars go out to the participating districts of this cooperative sport. That's it in a nutshell. I do go through that fairly quickly. If you ever have any questions leading up to this meeting or even next week, please feel free to reach out. I'd be happy to discuss this in more detail.
Thank you. What questions do we have for Mr. Sarno?
I just have a question. Just I appreciate the video that you put out. I watched it. But I'm not sure. I just want to make sure. So you have, just on the top line, you have it at budget to actual percentage. I understand you can compare year to year. The 112 million, that is for the entire year, correct? And then the 67 million is activity to date, correct? So is there a way that we can denote what percentage of the year we are through? So that we can compare. So we're 60% of budget. Are we 60% of the school year done?
Yeah.
You know, you know, is there a way that that makes that easier to visualize?
Yeah, the interesting part about that, and I think if it's okay, I'm going to channel Nancy Justman real quick. Because as she spoke today during her three minutes, the widget reference or even the way that maybe healthcare is billed. You have a customer, you bill it out to insurance, you get paid, and you get into a cycle for that. And I think we can think of many of our own household incomes is that you work, you get paid, you have expenditures, you pay your bills. Schools, and I even have that little bit of a footnote here. It's that highlighted blue, the money coming in versus the money going out on our large pieces, which are our property taxes. And that's on a cycle per state statute, as well as our general state aid that we received from the the state. Those don't follow a month. We don't get a monthly revenue coming in for our property taxes. So I'd be happy to see if I can get creative and maybe connect with you.
I just meant like how how much of the school year days, why, I mean, if you take the entire.
That's actually pretty easy. So our our budget year starts July 1 and we end June 30. We're sitting mid-April right now. So there's roughly two and a half months left in the fiscal year that you're monitoring.
So we're more than 60% of the way through the year. And I understand expenditures come in clumps. I'm just trying to get an idea of how that balances. And then I just had a question on the gifting section, gift fund. I'm just curious, and I wasn't here last year for for that adjustment, but I noticed that, you know, the percentages look very different. But I think, you know, it looks like the giving has percentage wise is not quite where it was last year. But the actual dollar amounts are, what prompted the change in the expected budget for gifting?
Yeah, so the activity that that we noted, it was going to be fairly consistent with the activity last year. And so we increased this year's budget in anticipation that there would be more student activity.
Okay.
So last year was the first year that we fully utilized Fund 21 at the high school level. And so we're estimating that that $786,000 referenced for the budget.
Right.
That that was an estimate based on activity through the district. That was an estimate based on activity through the district.
Okay.
We're now getting into a new pattern.
So you have actual numbers to use now more so than anticipated?
We're starting to pattern this out a little bit differently. And that will even fluctuate just a little bit based on when we have our out-of-state, or for that even matter, out-of-country field trips. Those are large dollar amounts that, you know, several thousand dollars at 35, 40, 50 students going on those. Those are all dollars that, anticipating those activities, because it's money coming in and money going out for those trips that we'll make sure that we monitor those appropriately as well.
Thank you. And then the, when we see numbers in the 99%, 100% range, we are not expecting any additional expenses to occur for the rest of the fiscal year, is my assumption, because we've maxed out that budget. Are there any that have hit that number that we're still expecting expenses? There's no, I know you said you had no concerns. So everything so far is, we're meeting what we need to meet.
Correct. Wonderful questions. I just highlighted on the first page, the insurance and debt. So we do have one last little payment that will be made for that. But generally speaking, any area, based on payment cycles, so we may be, as an example of this, on a quarterly cycle where it's front-loaded.
Sure.
And so, again, monitoring that, and we know and we anticipate those expenditures. I don't have any concerns as we wrap the year up in the next three months.
Thank you.
And we, just for this group's awareness as well, we generally pick April 15, because everybody knows what that is. But that's pretty much a spending deadline for the district. There are occasions where we have from an instructional need or even an operational need where we can incur expenses from April 16 through June 30. But we need to make sure that we receive something, and then it's paid for and used. So if there's a student need and we buy it on June 15, school ended on the 10th. So that would be moved. If it was something that was for an August date for a professional development, we need to pay for that out of the next fiscal year. So we make sure that we follow that April 15, because from there out, the auditors scrutinize everything in pretty good detail. So we monitor that activity. So really, from about this day, it's about two weeks after this, through March 31. Where our spending, short of salaries and wages as we pay staff throughout the rest of the fiscal year, curbs off fairly heavily.
Thank you for helping.
Yeah, great question, sir. Thank you.
Questions? Kurt?
Yeah, just have one comment and one question, and my comment is on debt. Just to reiterate, we have enough, we have the debt, we have levied enough in taxes to pay for all our debt. So we have the money sitting in accounts, so we're basically at zero debt.
Correct.
And I just want to reiterate, there is financial challenges, but our neighbors, again, I talked about this in the past. Kiwascom's over 30 million in debt. Slinger's over 30 million in debt. Germantown's over 60 million in debt. And I got the exact figures, but we're at least a good financial shape to handle some of our challenges. So I commend the district and the past boards on that, even back 10, 15 years. Because we heard the community and we paid off debt. I know we had some challenges, but we're in good shape. My question is just even on the 112 million budget, just piggyback on Chad, just to be clear, we've got three months left in the year. This was a balanced budget going into the year. So we're not, you forecast a balanced budget at the end of year when it's done June 30.
So one of the big pieces that we're still monitoring very closely is health insurance. We're a self-funded health insurance, self-funded health and dental. We increased this year's budget by 8% for health insurance, and we're actually exceeding that right now by about 10%. So there's two reports that we receive in July. So again, that July keeps creeping up with some finalization prior to the audit. We're monitoring that closely. We want to make sure that we end this fiscal year in the black, or really close to it. I mean, when you can say you got within about a 1% plus or minus, that is the target. So that's the goal. I think we can still hit that. We may need to make some adjustments, but that would come forward through a budget amendment. So information brought to you for discussion, awareness, action, publicly posting that in the newspaper and following those statutory requirements.
Are there any funds we're at risk of losing if they're not spent? So if we end up with, if we end up in the black, like hopefully we do at the end of the fiscal year, those funds are all accessible to us next year to be used for additional budget expenses if necessary?
Correct.
Or to cover gaps?
Yep. So if you recall from that screencast file, that first document that I shared with the yellow fund balance beginning and ending, those fund balances, when the clock strikes midnight from June 30 to July 1, anything that's in the black gets reconciled to zero, and those dollar amounts get added to fund balance. If we ended up in the red, in the negative, when the clock strikes midnight, we pull from fund balance and reconcile everything at zero.
To zero.
At school finance.
Got it. Thank you.
Nothing gets returned back to the municipalities or the state. We finalize grant claims. So there's a process that we go, it's a sequential process leading up into the audit.
Right. Good questions. Other questions? So this is an action item. As such, I would move to approve the 2022-2023 revenue and expenditures in the aggregate through March 31, 2023 as presented. Is there a second?
I'll second that, Chris.
Thank you, Kurt. Motion and second to approve revenues and expenditures in the aggregate through March 31, 2023. Any final discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for the presentation. Appreciate it. All right. That concludes our action items. So on to future agenda items. First of all, discussion of our board meeting calendar. So upcoming, our next three regular board meetings are all scheduled for 5:30 PM here in the Education Service Center, May 8, May 22, and June 5. Our Curriculum and Policy Committee dates, I think we're confirming once we know who's on the committee, so we'll be talking about that next time, correct?
Yeah, we've got some great idea. If you have interim interest in joining us, otherwise, the two committees will proceed with starting to wrangle dates, members who expressed interest tonight, so that we can move on that.
That's a great idea. We'll keep that scheduling going forward. All right, so those are the scheduled dates of the regular board meetings, though I encourage folks to take a look at the official postings just in case there is a change to the time or date, but that's what we have on the plan right now. Any questions on the calendar? All right, we're then on to items for follow-up and communication. And Superintendent Wimmer, maybe you can just give a little background on what this section of the agenda is all about for our new members.
Sure. So at this point, again, we might hear something in public comment. You can engage at that time, but might be asking for follow-up on something. There might be some information that perhaps a team was missing, but we need to get you those numbers. So it's a time to reiterate. It might be a time to ask for something to be placed on an agenda, that kind of piece. And I apologize to John in advance. In last meeting, he was talking about a discussion, and we had just previously talked about, talking about in committee, so that was my misstep on thinking that it was going to be on this agenda. So just make sure that we're clarifying where we're putting things or you're recommending things for follow-up so that I'm really clearly executing. I think that would be helpful, too. So, but now is an opportunity for that. But again, the door's not closed. We meet, we go through our operations, what we need to see on agendas, and then the board president and I craft that agenda. We do some checks and balances on it, and then we push it out. That's how it's developed.
Great. Thank you for that background. So with that said, are there items for follow-up and communication?
I just have one quick thing.
Sure.
Is there any update on the right sizing tool, where we're at with that?
Oh, we've been onboarding the tool and participating in training right now.
So it's up and running, and we're getting ready to actually utilize it?
Yeah.
Excellent. Great. Other items for follow-up communication? All right, then to really indoctrinate our new board members, we have a matter to be discussed in executive session. So just to give a little bit of background on that, Superintendent Wimmer, I think, as you said, there are very, very limited reasons that we can go in, and so the administration supplies us with a motion that very clearly delineates, according to Wisconsin statutes, the reason that we're, the reason that we're meeting. So.
Correct.
Traditionally speaking, I will read it and ask for a second. Then what happens is we vote. And what I normally forget is that this is a roll call vote, so I will call individuals' names. And in my binder, I've got a list of all of our names in random order here. So if we need to do successive roll call votes, that's why you'll hear me call out your names in random order. With that being said, I move to adjourn into executive session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.851(c) to consider employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, and take any such action if necessary based on its discussion, namely, employment and compensation. Is there a second? Melanie, thank you for the second. So you have a motion to adjourn into executive session. Any final discussion? Hearing none, I will turn to my roll sheets here and call the roll. Mrs. Swigert votes yes. Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Dr. Temez?
Yes.
Ms. Kruger?
Yes.
Mr. Rebholz?
Yes.
Ms. Ergot?
Yes.
And Mr. Donaldson?
Yes.
All right, we are unanimous, and we are adjourned into executive session. Thank you everyone for coming and for watching.